Frank, are you good to go? All right. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jack Courier. I live here in Nashua. We all do here on the board that we volunteer on. This is the Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment. If you're here for the Board of Aldermen, that's downstairs. So hopefully, everybody here is for the Nashua Board of Adjustment. Again, my name is Jack Courier. I serve as the Chair. Going around the table, we have Mr. J. P. Boucher, who is our Vice Chair, and Mr. Steve Lionel, who's a member, and Mr. Jay Welch, who's also a member. Ms. Kathy Vitale had to work late tonight. She's on her way here, and we expect her to join us shortly, in about 15 minutes. To my left is Mr. Carter Falk. He is the -- serves on the staff of City Hall as a Deputy Planning Manager. First, a couple of things. If anybody has a cellphone, I ask that you put it on silent mode, as I will make sure mine is, or turn it off. We are recording this meeting. It is important to be recorded, and it's recorded for a couple of reasons. First, because of the written record. The written record is what the lasting evidence of this meeting is. And this meeting is actually recorded in three venues. It's first recorded video. There are cameras running. It'll be replayed on Nashua Public TV. And I have to thank Frank, who you don't see. He's behind the door capturing the action. And the one thing that Frank can't do is make me look any younger, or get your voice if it's not in the microphone. So I ask that only one person speaks at a time, and who's ever speaking is speaking into the microphone. And I'll -- we'll also be asking for your name and your address, because that's an important point of the record. If the -- if your spelling isn't obvious of your name, I probably ask you to spell it, so we can be sure to get it right. The other -- this meeting is also recorded digitally audio, and you can stream it in a few days at the Nashua New Hampshire .gov website. If you click down to the Zoning Board of Adjustment, and you can, you know, listen to the meeting as it plays out. The third method that this meeting is recorded is the written transcription, and that's actually what's considered the final record for the courts, should something rise to the court. So before we get going, I just go a little bit about the rules. We're here tonight to hear both variances and special exceptions. Or are there any -- yeah, there is a special exception. So there's two issues here. We have a couple items called variances, and another one called a special exception. And variances are requests to deviate from this thick book of Nashua zoning codes, which we all in town live to. And the state of New Hampshire, as many other states, has set up local zoning boards, such as us, to act as a relief valve, because municipal zoning has been defined to be a good and proper thing, but just the administration and of that is very challenging. So the first safety valve, you might say, for folks who want to deviate from the zoning is right here. So we're hearing tonight variances from this book, and there's five criteria that by state law, this board needs to hear to grant a variance. And let me just tick through the five criteria for a variance real quick. Number one is that the variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Number two, the spirit of the ordinance is observed. Number three, substantial justice is done. Number four of five is that literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship. And the last one is the values of surrounding properties are not diminished. So that's the five criteria that by state law, a board needs to hear to grant a variance. And tonight, there'll likely be five, unless some of us recuse. Right now, there'll be four, perhaps, on the first case. But to -- for a variance to be approved, essentially, it needs three or more affirmative votes. Three or more out of five affirmative votes is what's needed to grant a variance. Tonight, we're also hearing special exception. A special exception is a slightly different request. The bar is a little bit lower. A special exception is a use that's actually permitted in this book of zoning, but it's only permitted if it meets the following five criteria. The first is that the special exception has to be listed in this book as a special exception. And tonight, we have an accessory-in-law dwelling, and that is an accepted special exception. But what the board needs to hear is a couple of criteria that all need to be satisfied. Number one is that the traffic -- I'm sorry, the requested use or activity will not create undue traffic congestion or undue impair pedestrian -- unduly impair pedestrian safety. Number -- the other next criteria is that the requested use or activity will not overload any public water, drainage, or sewer system. The next criteria is that if there's any special exception regulations, that they are fulfilled. And as we hear each case, if there are special exception regulations, we'll be reviewing those with the applicant. And the final one is that the requested use or activity will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the district or immediate neighborhood. So that's the five criteria that by state law, the board needs to hear to grant a special exception. How we hear the testimony tonight. There's two elements to what we hear tonight. The first is the public hearing. The public hearing is where we, the board, hears from you, the public. And you're here, we'd like to hear everything you have to say about the case. And the way the public hearing proceeds is that the applicant will speak first, and the applicant has up to 15 minutes to present their case. Now, the applicant -- each applicant has already submitted a written application, which we have before us. But nonetheless, the applicant will present their case and have up to 15 minutes. After the applicant has spoken, anybody else who is in favor of the application will have up to five minutes to speak. After all favorable testimony is heard, anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition will have up to five minutes to present their testimony to us. If there is opposition, sometimes there is, sometimes there isn't. If there is opposition, then the applicant, after all opposition has spoken, the applicant will have up to five minutes to address the opposition. And again, if there is opposition, then one, after the applicant has spoken, the final say you might be will be by one and only one person who has spoken in opposition, and they'll have the final five minutes to present their case. So that, what I've just spoken, is the public hearing component of each case, again, where we hear from you. At the conclusion of the public hearing, we'll start the public meeting, which is where we meet up here and deliberate on the case, and likely come to a conclusion, which is usually either affirmative or negative, or sometimes table, if, say, for example, we want to get more information. So again, the public meeting will commence right after the public hearing, and that usually finishes the -- and that will be the termination of the case. If anybody doesn't have it, a copy of tonight's agenda is on the table over there, so feel free to get a copy of the agenda if you don't have it. And there is one late change to the agenda, which is case number two. Case number two is Scup Realty LLC. It's 323 Daniel Webster Highway. It's a sign request. That has been tabled to the next meeting, which is January 23. Was there anybody here for the Long's Jewelry Scup sign on DW Highway, down near the border of Massachusetts? Okay. No one? Oh, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
Also, there was a case on land of Lynn Street, Lucian Bergeron. That case was heard by the zoning board back in October of 2017. It was tabled to this meeting. The owner has withdrawn that application.
Was there anybody here for the land on Lynn Street case? Okay, nobody was here for that. All right. A few other elements. After we render a decision tonight, it's important for me to convey that there's a 30-day window of appeal. And what that means is if there's any aggrieved party, if any party thinks we got it wrong, and the next step for the aggrieved party of standing would be to file a request for us to rehear the case. And there's a 30-day window for a party to do that. So if anybody here tonight is interested in that, you could contact Mr. Falk for the form to apply for a rehearing request. And that's a very important point, because whether we come to an approval or a denial on any case, there's this 30-day window of appeal, that if there is an appeal, and for example, we decide to rehear the case, then that approval or that denial would be stayed. So there's really a 30-day window that ticks after this meeting, and that's very important, because, you know, a case could, you know, eventually be overturned. Now, another element is if there's an aggrieved party who puts in a request for a rehearing, and we don't rehear the request, or we still come to a decision that you feel aggrieved, the next step would be to appeal your case to the Hillsborough County Superior Court. So let's see, did I cover everything? Let me ask, before we get going, is there anyone in the audience with questions about the procedure tonight, before we get going on case number one?
Just clarification. Case number two was tabled when?
To --
January 23.
23.
When was that done?
He just did it --
Just now.
About 10 minutes ago.
We don't have to vote on that?
No.
No, no, no. Okay. That's what's curious. Thanks.
Okay. All right. I think we're good to get going. So first, let me read into the record case number one. Case number one, the owner is Hate It When LLC. It's land at East Glenwood Street. The request is for the following variances. One is a minimum lot frontage, 60 feet is required, 50 feet is proposed. Number two, minimum lot area, 7,500 square feet is required, 5,000 square feet is proposed. Number three, minimum lot width, 75 feet is required, 50 feet is proposed. And number four, the minimum right side yard setback, 10 feet is required, 5 feet is proposed. And all requests are to construct a new single-family house on a non-conforming lot of record. So before we open the public hearing, I guess I look to the board and say, you've had the case in front of you, and you've also had the additional information about the previous decision that this board had rendered on the same lot, although it was in a file of a different address. And so the question we have before us is the Fisher versus Dover test. And I guess I would start off by saying, I think we should discuss the Fisher versus Dover test with this case. And -- but I'm wondering what the other three opinions here are of that situation. Mr. Lionel?
I think that, given the decades that have passed since the original 1977 request, there is a later court case, a simplex case, where if there are -- if there have been changes in the ordinances, changes in the state laws, then we can and should hear the request. And I think that it's reasonable to hear the request.
All right. Thank you for your thoughts on the matter, Mr. Boucher.
I would agree.
Short and sweet, very well. Mr. Welch?
I concur.
All right. Well, I'd say with that, that we have uniformity, that the four of us agree that this is the same case as requested before, but the length of time and the law changes warrant that the case be reheard here tonight. Yeah?
Also, for the public, attorney, the attorney representing the case also submitted a letter, because we questioned whether or not the case should be having a Fisher versus Dover determination. And the attorney for the case has submitted a letter to this board explaining their reasons why that they feel that the case should be moving forward. So that is part of the record, so, just so people in the audience know that.
Just, did everybody receive the letter from the attorney as part of the record?
I emailed it to everybody.
Yes.
Yeah.
I even printed it out.
All right.
I think there's a copy in everybody's desk as well, so. And that's their reasoning for believing that they don't need to meet the Fisher versus Dover, that there's been some substantial changes in the application for the hardship criteria that have occurred in the last couple Supreme Court cases. And they feel that those changes, that the case is ready just to go forward. Attorney Knakis, am I stating that correctly? I believe I am.
The Ray versus Summerford case.
All right. We're just -- I don't know if we -- I don't want to open the public hearing just yet, so if you could just --
Okay.
What I'd like to do is actually just take a little vote on this. I make a motion that we are going to rehear this case as stated on record, because of the case law changes.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Lionel. Any discussion on that motion? Show of hands in favor. So that motion carries. So we are as if this is a new case. And with that, I'd like to open the public hearing. So who is here to present the case? If you'd like to give us your name and address for the record?
Thank you. Mark Knakis. I have offices at 159 Main Street here in Nashua, representing Hate It When LLC and its owner, Larry and Nellie Jacobs. Mr. Chairman, if we could, if Ms. Vitale is nearby, we'd certainly love her to be able to hear the application and vote on it. If she -- if -- I don't mind starting, if she's going to pick it up halfway through, if you feel that that's going to be appropriate as well. You're not even halfway through. We're almost 15 minutes into the 15-minute period, so.
Well, as if on cue, Ms. Vitale.
I did not want to start without you. This is so good.
I know she has a fast car, so she made it here quick. So just to bring you up to speed, we just had a discussion on Fisher v. Dover, and we voted that we would rehear the case because of case law changes since 1977. And so with that, again, we're starting the public hearing. The timer here isn't working, so Mr. Falk is going to use his iPhone 6 here to keep track of the 15 minutes that Attorney Knakis has to present his case. And as he's putting that up, could I see a show of hands of who has an interest in this case in the audience? See a couple, three? Okay, just want to get a flavor. All right.
And, Mr. Chairman, I have some handouts, if I could. It's the same thing as here, but I think you'll have an easier time looking.
Sure, if you'd like to approach and just walk, just drop those off real quick. And for folks in the audience, if you can't see this, you could move in a little closer. Or, yeah, he's got some extra copies, if anybody wants to grab it and pass it around. Take it away.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Mark Knakis, and I represent Hate It When LLC and its owners, Larry and Nellie Jacobs. Tonight, we're requesting variances for minimum frontage, side yard, width, and area requirements for residential building lot in the RA Zone. Property is located next to the home at 57 East Glenwood Street. And again, there was a previous variance request, but we've gone over that, those requirements. As you know, there's five requirements that the applicant needs in order to meet the variance request, for the board to grant the variance request. I'll address each of those individually, and welcome any questions the board has at any time. The requested variances will not be contrary to the public interest. The requested variances seeking relief from the zoning ordinance don't alter the character of the neighborhood. The proposed use is for a single-family residence in a single-family zone, in a residential zone, and it's of similar size to other lots in the neighborhood, including the adjacent corner lot, which is shown here. And that corner lot has about 5 feet less square footage, due to it being on a curve. The variances would in no way adversely affect the safety, welfare, or injure public rights, and the granting of the variances would allow the present use of the existing Lot 135 and be beneficial to the neighborhood. As I said, lots of size already exist in the neighborhood, and in fact, the lot next door is slightly smaller. Moreover, most of the surrounding properties themselves have some sort of setback, frontage, width, or area violation. And I've highlighted these lots. This is a lot here, the red, with the X on it. And all these lots around it have either a width problem, a frontage problem, a setback problem, or an area problem. So this is truly going to be in character with the neighborhood. We're not going to go out of character for the neighborhood. This is truly going to be something, and in fact, the house right next door to it is the exact same lot size, almost slightly smaller, and has setback violations as well. The proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance, because the proposed use is for a single-family residence in a single-family district. The proposed home keeps with the character of the neighborhood and provides needed residential entry-level housing for the community. The proposed use also provides for adequate off-street parking and space, and will not pose any threat to the public, safety, or welfare. Additionally, the only variance request that's not mandated by the mere size of the lot, in other words, it's a 50-foot wide lot, we can't get to 60 feet. It's a 50-foot wide lot, we can't get to 75 feet for the frontage. It's a 5,000-square-foot lot, we can't make it 7,500 square feet. The only variance that we're requesting is a side yard variance over here, next to the property, which the applicant also owns. So the only property affected by a variance request that's not mandated by the lot size is on our own property. In fact, the lot next door has a required 10 feet from the non-owner's lot. Substantial justice will also be because a variance would allow for reasonable use of the lot, and the construction of a single-family home in keeping with other homes in the area and other properties in the area. On a lot, again, that has historically been left as a lot in the parcel. And again, this goes back to the 67439A, which I know the board's familiar with, which says that you can't consolidate and merge lots involuntarily from a grandfathered lot. So this fits perfectly within that scheme. The proposed use will also enhance the neighborhood, and the value of the neighborhood homes will not create a burden on the town resources or neighbors. And without these variance, again, this lot could only be used as a vacant parcel. So truly, it takes away any reasonable use of the lot without granting of the variance. The proposed use will also not diminish the value of the surrounding properties, as a home would be built in a manner consistent with the other residences in the neighborhood and a style, which I think will enhance the neighborhood. I have a picture of this, which is difficult to see, but this is the style of the home that would go there. The existing lot is similar, again, as I said, to several other lots in the area, in terms of setback, frontage, size, and width. So finally, you know, the biggest question is the hardship, and a little enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance would result in an unnecessary hardship, in this case, due to the special conditions of the property. Specifically, due to its size and the fact that it's an undeveloped lot at this point. These special conditions of the property distinguish it from the other properties in the area, resulting in unnecessary hardship as, A, there's no fair and substantial relationship that exists between the ordinance and the provisions of the specific application of those provisions to this property; and B, the proposed use is a reasonable one, since it is a residential use within a residential district. Additionally, even beyond those two tests, due to the special circumstances of the property that distinguish it from the other properties in the area, which are, again, the size and the undeveloped nature of the property, the property can't be used reasonably in strict conformance with the ordinance. And the variances are therefore necessary to enable a reasonable use of the lot. In other words, without the granting of the variances, the lot is essentially rendered unusable. So, thank you. Any questions? Entertain any questions?
Any questions for Attorney Knakis? Am I saying that right, Knakis?
It is, yes.
Knakis, okay. Questions, anyone? I guess I have a question.
Yes.
Like, on your map here, with the yellow highlight of other zoning issues, let's just, let me just say, like, number 57. What is the issue with that?
Rear yard setback of the structure.
What, like, of the shed in the back?
Yes.
Okay. And how about 49?
Same thing. And the side yard setback as well, is within 10 feet.
Okay. And then, just going down the street a little more, 45?
45, again, there's a shed along the lot line.
Okay. And then across the street, like, 52 and 54, I mean, 52 and 44.
And sheds, 44 is a side yard as well, but 44, I don't know who the sheds belong to in the back.
Mm-hmm.
It's that way. And 52 just threw sheds in the back. And it was hard to tell on the GIS maps, but I believe that both of those have side yard setbacks, but I can't absolutely confirm it on scale, it appeared that way. But I just, I couldn't go out, obviously couldn't go out and measure.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I mean, I think that --
Those scaled out were about separate feet, so it was very close, either way.
All right. And then, the other question I have is, there was a little bit of history of the ownership of this lot. It's --
Yes.
But I didn't, I couldn't follow it. It seemed like it was part of 65, and then it was sold to 57, but I couldn't --
I think at one time --
So I'd like you to enlighten me on that.
And I only got this from the record of the 1977 application.
Mm-hmm.
But I think at one time, all these four lots, 52 and 57, 58, I don't know, 257, then the X lot, and then 65, I think those were all owned by the same family.
Mm-hmm.
And I think these two got conveyed out, the X lot and 65, and then 65 conveyed a lot back to the owners of 57.
And when did that get conveyed back to 57?
That was like in '71, I think.
'71.
Seventy, '71. I'm not, again, I'm not positive, but in looking back, that's my recollection.
So, and how long have your clients owned 57?
Owned that for about six months.
Six months, okay. And when they bought that, did they buy two lots or one lot?
There were three separate lots in the legal description, so.
One, two, three.
What was the one, two, and I can't?
Two of them were on 57, and I should have --
Okay.
I got upside down.
So at some point in days of old, 57 was actually two lots that was merged and built a house on?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Actually, all the lots in that area all started out as 50 by 100 lots.
Okay. When I site walked the area, I guess I, one thing I thought of is the X lot, since we're calling it the X lot.
Yes.
It looks to me like a perfectly fine functioning side yard for number 57. And I was just trying to line that up with your comment that it's like a worthless lot, or it's a useless lot.
Well, only because, as, you can't be forced to merge that lot in under 67439A, the state statute.
Mm-hmm.
It's a grandfathered lot of record. It has to be recognized as a grandfathered lot of record. So what that statute's saying is that you can't merge it into the other piece, basically make it, basically devalue it by not having a separate lot of record and attaching it to another property.
When the, it was recently sold, in my mind, this was probably marketed as, you know, a home lot with this contiguous lot that's a side yard.
Right, it was easily --
And at best, in need of a variance, if it was going to be parted off.
But always existing on the town maps and records as being two separate lots.
Mm-hmm. And I guess --
The essential was always there. I mean, you know, as you go through and you talk, obviously, variances were going to be needed, but obviously, there's consideration at that time exchanged for, you know, how, what can be actually accomplished with these two different, three different lots described in the deed, and two different lots of record, as established by the city of Nashua.
Mm-hmm. And I guess the other, I don't know if it's a question or an observation, but when I site walked the area, this, what I saw, driving up and down the street, is pretty much what I see on the map in front of us. It's not always the case, but I would summarize that by saying, most of the lots seem to be fairly consistent on East Glenwood.
Right.
Like, 65, you know, clearly is the smallest lot, you know, the one on the corner there.
Right.
But just in kind of a walk-around, it would seem to me that if the X lot, you know, that's, would end up being a much tighter development than generally in the area. It's just my opinion, but I, I guess that's what I thought from my walk around, and then, interestingly, after that, when we got the information on the 1977 case, there was a heck of a lot of testimony that was stating the same thing.
Right.
Which I'm sure you read, since you read that case.
I did.
And I just wanted to hear your feedback on my thought on that.
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, the, the size of the house on the, the corner lot is actually larger than we're proposing, as you can see here.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think ours is less intrusive even than that lot.
Mm-hmm.
The only house that it comes close to is the lot which is already owned by the applicant.
Mm-hmm.
So, we chose, we chose to impinge on that lot rather than anybody else's lot. Otherwise, it fits within the envelope quite nicely.
Mm-hmm.
The other thing that was, I did a little looking at some of the other people that were saying things 40 years ago. I, I don't, I don't think anybody else is here from there, but oddly enough, some of those same people had side yard setbacks, it's mostly side yard setback issues themselves. They didn't, they had sufficient lot sizes, but they, you know, most of them had some, some of, if they were to build anything else, they would need variance requests themselves.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's a tight neighborhood. It, that's the nature of the neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
The houses are, are not huge on the neighborhood. The lots are fairly small, the houses are fairly small, and we think that this fits right in with the whole character of the neighborhood.
All right. Thank you for answering my questions. Let me look around and see, were there any questions by any of the other board members? None? All right. So, we're all set. You can have a seat. Was there anybody else to speak in favor of this application? Anybody in favor?
I'm definitely in favor.
If you'd like to come to the microphone and just give us your name and address and, and anything else you might want to say in favor?
Robert LaPlante, 21 Derrick, New Hampshire.
Okay.
In favor for this project.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other, hi, if you'd like to come, again, your name and address for the record?
Kathy Snyder, 135 Brookline Street, Pepperell, Mass. Real estate broker at RE/MAX Properties, in favor.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Any questions? None? All right. Anybody else to speak in favor? Questions, concerns, opposition? Is there, I see a hand, ma'am, if you'd like to come to the microphone or come together, that's okay too. Hi, good evening.
Hi, I'm Carla O'Hara. It's my husband, Mike O'Hara.
Hi.
We own that little corner lot at 65.
All right.
So, you know, we're a little concerned, primarily that it's going to be right on top of our house, and it's nice that you're moving towards the 57 side, but it is a tight lot.
Mm-hmm.
We bought the house November 2016, so we just got there, a little over a year ago.
Uh-huh.
And the lot was kind of cut up oddly. If you look at our walkout basement, there is a fence right there.
Two steps out the door.
That goes to the 57 East Glenwood lot. We thought, that's really bizarre. So, we did see that back in '77, maybe it looks like there was a sale of that lot.
When they sold 65 to the person that we bought it from, they sold a portion of that land to 57.
Right.
I see.
So, I think that's where that line got cut up oddly.
Okay.
I guess, but anyway, it was just, I don't know, I understand that there's a lot of time and money involved in this. We're just focused on concerns that, like you stated, all the other houses in the neighborhood seem to have a lot of alboroom, for lack of a better-
Right.
...description. This one seems like it's going to be pretty tight, and that's just, and I'm sure it's probably going to be a beautiful home, and, but our concern is, you know.
Right, where it's going to fall. I don't want to look out my bedroom window and look in somebody else's bedroom window. You know, it's, it's-
Yeah.
...tight little space there.
Mr. Boucher, did, did you have any other testimony? Mr. Boucher has a question for you. Take it away.
So, thank you for coming. So, the lot, obviously, we're here because the lot needs a variance. If the lot, and I just want to just present this to you, just so you understand what you're looking at. So, if the lot was, even if it was of the, the correct, if it was, it was, it was a legal lot of, legal lot, legal lot for size, it's still a 10-foot side setback. So, they, a builder could have come in and built that house right there anyways. That's notwithstanding the other issues that you have, but I just want you to understand that if the lot was bigger, it doesn't mean necessarily that the house would be pushed away. They could literally build that house right at, you know, right on the line of 10 feet. I just want you to understand that, and I don't know if you realize that, you know?
And that's the concern.
Right.
We are a little concerned that it's going to be right there. When we look out the window and we see those stakes marking off the lot line, it is very close to our house. So, you know, when we found this home, part of the appeal was that nobody was right on top of us.
And we went to 57, once we realized that there was a sale of other parts of the property, and tried, talked to him about buying that portion back, but I think he was already in foreclosure and said that he, it was out of his hands.
Right.
So, our concern because, mostly because of the walkout in the basement and the wall that's right there. And on the other side of the wall is the continuation of the walkout with this nice stone wall and, quite lovely on the other side of the wall, but now it's just, you know, the fence. So, that's why I went next door to talk to him about buying some of the land back, but I understand that I hit it when, bought it as, you know, as it was, so. And I, I talked, I tried to talk to somebody over there to find out what was going on, but no one wanted to.
Right. And, and again, I just, and trying just for, for a second, because you're the, you're the one that seems to be most effective as the abutter, right?
Yes.
And, you know, again, I'm just trying to put in perspective for you that, that they could put a two-story house, you know, there could have been one there if the lot was fine and, and there was nothing else going on. You could have come home one day, or you could have gone on vacation, one day come back and there's a two-story house right behind your house. So, it, again, in the same effect, right? And there would really be nothing that anybody could do about that, right? Because they would be in the legal right to do that.
We don't own the land, I understand that.
Right, right.
That is why I'm here, right? So, we can voice our-
No, 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 and I understand that. I just want you to know that, that existed. Okay. Thank you.
Were there any other questions for the O'Hara's? I actually had one other question. When you said you, that your basement door walkout, was that on, that's going directly towards 57?
Correct.
And could you make a guess at how far the property line is from your house on that side?
I mean, if it, if they put the fence up where the property line is, we're talking-
Eight feet, maybe?
Maybe.
Eight, okay, just curious. All right, thank you. No other questions? All right, thanks for coming. Was there anybody else to speak with questions or concerns? Seeing none, one more, no other questions or concerns. Attorney, would you like to come back and speak to that? It's, you're right, you have up to five minutes.
I hope to take less. Yeah, I think the vice chairman addressed some of my, my concerns, or my response, which was, we took great pains to push this as far away as we could from the, from the corner lot in order to not impinge on them and stay within the setback envelope on this property. Additionally, they, you know, the setback impingement comes not from our property, it comes from the corner lot property, which is within the setback lines on the side yard. So, we've taken pains to get away from that, and, you know, I, I think the applicant could even be talked into trying to move it another foot or two away from there, closer to the other house. We certainly want to impact you as, as little as possible, and I was just talking to him. I think we'd certainly like to engage with the owners regarding either a landscape design or a fence design in order to make it comfortable for you at that property. So, I don't know if you'd like us to speak for a few minutes and see if we can come to some conclusion regarding that, or-
I, I kind of feel we should just proceed and-
That's fine.
I mean, who knows what'll happen tonight?
In the future, yeah, the future is always undoubted.
You know, I, I mean, you never know what, what'll happen tonight, and if, if there was future discussion, for whatever reason, and there was a, a, a need, you know, to move something left or right, or, you know, you could always come back, right?
And again, I'd like to just point out the provision of the ordinance that I didn't touch on before, which is the minimum lot area requirements.
Mm-hmm.
And it does say that you can't issue a permit for a lot that does not meet, meet the minimum lot area requirements, except for non-conforming lots of record. So, my, I talked with Mr. Falk about this earlier. Part of my feeling is that we don't even need a variance for a non-conforming lot of record because this says that you can build on a non-conforming lot of record. That being said, I think we meet the requirements of a, of hardship and variance, the five criteria, anyway. But I think clearly, your ordinance says that non-conforming lots of record can be built upon, and they can have, have permits issued for them, for just this type of situation. So, thank you all. Any other questions?
Mr. Boucher has a question.
So, a couple of questions. Number one is, was there any, any thought of keeping this home in the setbacks in the building envelope?
We, we, yeah, there was. It's, it makes the home even tighter, and our thought was, we, we got it within the envelopes for front and back and the side, which has a butter, a non-owning a butter. And so, to push it to the other side, I think made it more in keeping with the size of the homes in the neighborhood and only impacted the applicant. Didn't impact anybody else, so. But if, if you were to grant it with five feet less, you could probably squeeze it in with five feet less, but it wouldn't, I don't think it would be beneficial to either the neighborhood or the applicant, because I think the home would be more in keeping with the size of the homes in the area.
I'm sitting here.
And another question, and again, in regards to the neighbor, and again, they're, they're obviously going to be impacted the most in their, in their privacy, right? So, on that side of the house, what can be done? I, you have a garage on the left side.
Yes.
What can be done as far as minimizing or eliminating windows on that side of the house so they don't feel like they're being looked on, on or watched?
First of all, they're, they're looking down on this.
Okay.
So, that, that is beneficial right there. Again, if you want to put a fence requirement up on the side to maintain a fence, I, we would gladly entertain that.
Okay.
No, in fact, the applicant said to me, you know, if they, if they want a fence of some sort to be there to block them out, be happy to, happy to put that in as part of the approval process.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Lionel?
We had testimony from the O'Hara's, is that right?
Yes.
That the applicant bought these properties in foreclosure, and the, it does not appear that the applicant is living there or intends to live there. We haven't had any testimony about that.
The applicant bought the properties after, the bank had foreclosed on it. The bank bought the properties at an arms-length sale with the bank. They've gone in, they've renovated all the properties. It's completely ready to be occupied. It, it just hasn't been, it's not ready for occupation yet. I think, have, have you gotten an occupancy permit yet?
Well, my, my question was, was really about, I mean, we've been talking about the, the impact on, on 65, but it, it looked to me that the intent was to also sell the house at 57-
Yes.
-to somebody, and then they would be dealing with this, this new house that's right on top of them.
Yes, and we've, and the house is under contract, and the person knows that we're going for the applications and has assented to the applications.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Attorney Kekanis? Ms. Vitale?
How far is the house at 57 to the lot, their lot line?
That is approximately, I think, 12 or 13 feet.
Okay, thank you.
And we actually considered, for a time, drawing a new lot line, but then we would not have had a grandfathered, non-conforming lot of record. We would have created a new lot, still wouldn't have been over the square, up to the square footage, so it, it wouldn't have solved the problem, and we would have created a crazy
Any other questions? I think we're all set. You can have a seat.
Thank you.
The O'Hara's, you have the right to provide further testimony, or you could let your case rest if you tapped out. So, I think you're okay. So, with that, I'll close the public hearing and open a public meeting. Thoughts on the matter? Somebody want to go first?
Well, I have a question for Mr. Falk. Can you talk more about this, what Attorney Kanakis was saying about a, a right to build on a, on a lot of record? I don't understand that.
There is a, a section in the code, what he mentioned about, hold on, I'll get it out for you. We rarely ever use it. It's in 190-16. It says, quote, "No permit for development shall be issued for a lot that does not meet the minimum lot area requirements of Table 16-3 of this chapter, except for non-conforming lots of record." So, that speaks to lot area, but it doesn't speak to frontage or width or setbacks. In my time here, I don't think we've ever really used this for anybody. No one, no one has really asked about it. You know, we've always treated them more conservatively, more conservatively, and have had applicants apply for variance for whatever they need that doesn't meet the ordinance. So, but it does state that, it's just that I don't think it's something that's really ever used. This is also put in to our land use ordinance about nine or 10 years ago when we redid this code, that, I don't believe that language was in there before. So, if we ever did that, this would be the first time. But, you know, it does state for area, but it doesn't, it doesn't give any, there's no language in there for frontage or depth or width or setbacks or anything. So, no matter what, they would be here anyway, the other, other three variances. Page 190, colon, 38.
Yeah, I found that text. I was just looking at this reference to 190-21. Trying to see what it's trying to say there. Talks about airports. I don't understand.
190, colon, 38, on the, on the bottom of the page.
Now, that, I, I, I see, it says, "Non-conforming lots of record see 190-"
Oh, it's number one up, it's number one up above that. It's like the last sentence, last three lines. Yeah, it clearly says, "Does not meet the minimum lot area."
Okay, so, 190, 121 is basically what you, what you can't do with a non-conforming lot, which does not really apply to this case. Okay. Thank you. Well, since I, I was talking, my major issue with this application, well, I, so, I have two. One is Attorney Kanakis was talking about how all of these other lots have, have setback issues, but it's, this is, almost all of them relate to accessory structures. issues, but it's, this is, almost all of them relate to accessory structures. And, you know, we, we deal with that sort of thing all the time, and especially in this old section of the, of the city, and this is one of the older sections of the city. That sort of deviation from code happens a lot. But when I sightwalked the area, I noticed that all of the houses in this neighborhood, in the immediate area, had visual separation from each other. Even, and the lots varied in size, and the houses varied in size, but there was, there was significant space between each of the houses. And building a house here would have three houses in a row that were right on top of each other, and I think would change the character of the neighborhood in a negative fashion. I think, I feel that this would tend to diminish values of surrounding properties. The number, and having these requests for, you know, multiple requests for variances, especially on, on side yard setbacks for the, for the building structure, not for sheds or garages and things like that, is not somewhere I want to go. That's my thought.
Thank you.
I was asked about the, the distance from the lot line on fifty-seven, because if it's a five-yard setback from the one house and thirteen on the other, you have eighteen on that side of the, between the houses. The couple on, from number sixty-five said they were about eight feet from the line, and it'll be a ten feet, also eighteen inches, eighteen feet between the houses. And I was thinking, when I lived down in Florida, we had seven foot to the lot line from the side of the house. Seven feet, so it was fourteen, which is, puts this at a greater distance than my twenty-four hundred square feet house down in Florida, which seemed to work just fine as far as distance between the houses. It's too bad that this lot that we're talking about didn't get treated in the same way as most of the lots in the neighborhood and get absorbed into sixty-five at some point and combine those two, but it didn't happen. So, now we have this, this lot that's sitting there. By testimony, it looks like a one-story house going in, which is not going to overwhelm I normally don't like this, but this type of, this type of lot, you know, that's what's going to be done with it eventually, my feeling is. If, if, it's probably better than having it just hang out, not really part of one property and not part of another. Something's got to be done with it, or it's, it'll get sold to one of those people right there. But it's probably better to take care of it than just let it sit there for a number of years. I like it that there's indicating that it's a one-story house. It's going to feel tight. It probably will be no different than a couple of other places in the city that had happened at one time or the other, and, and after a time, you, you kind of forget that it was done that way. I don't see anywhere else in the neighborhood, as I looked around, that it's going to be like a trend that takes place, like flag lots are, you know, deep lots that they build a house behind. I think it's many times worse than this type of request. So, I'd like to listen to whatever Bale says, you know. Something else might come to mind, but that's kind of where I stand right now.
Thank you. Mr. Welsh?
Sure. So, Ms. Vitale actually really kind of summed up what I was thinking. And in addition to that, the other thing that kind of popped in my mind was, the current owners could have tore down that existing structure at fifty-seven and built the house right where they're proposing to build the house in that lot. So, you know, I, I think it's, you know.
No, I don't think they could.
I don't know, but that'd be a different discussion. But, you know, as the application sits, I, I feel like it just, you know, take care of it now or you take care of it later.
So, you find support for it, as was Ms. Vitale?
I, you know, my thoughts right now are, you know, it's unfortunate that the O'Hara's at number sixty-five obviously didn't have this knowledge when they were looking at the property. That, you know, that's just unfortunate, and, you know. So, again, my, my concern is really for the butter at number sixty-five. And again, I did make the same observation that, that Mrs. Vitale made, was that, you know, there is approximately eighteen feet between both structures as, as designed, right? But the lot lines are in very different places on those structures. I don't think that we can not allow the property to be developed. I, I think that's the right of the, the home, the, the landowner. And again, I, I do put a lot of credence in the fact that this is a lot, a lot of record. I think we would have, it would be a really hard time for us to defend, you know, or I, I would have a hard time defending not allowing the property to go in. The only thing that I'm looking at is, and again, it's just my opinion, is I think that, you know, certainly putting a structure there is going to change, you know, going to change the view of the neighborhood. I, I don't necessarily think that, in the long run, it's a, it's a negative thing. I think if it's done correctly and, and with care and understanding and, you know, kind of structure that's going to go there. I don't necessarily know whether or not, this is not really something that's a make or break, but whether or not they need the, they need the variance on the, on the, on the right side of the property as you're facing the house. Again, would the five feet make a big difference after the house is built? I, I don't know. You know, I, I read all the supporting documents that the, that the attorney had supplied. I, I think that we have seen this type of issue before. Everything is treated differently. But I don't see anything that's grossly different than what, than what we looked at before on these non-conforming lots. So, with that, what I would say is, I would be in support of the application in a couple of different variations, with or without the, the five-foot incursion on the side setback. I'd also would want to make sure, in some type of language, that there would be a fence or something put up to at least give some privacy to number sixty-five down the left side of the property line, or southeast or whatever that is. So, I guess I'm in support of the application. I don't know how we would, what variation would come out. Again, I, I'm saying this because I don't see where, I don't see where, again, we can deny the, the, the landowner's reasonable use of the property in this case, is, is, is building, building a home there.
Very well, thanks. My thoughts on the matter is, I'm, I'm seeing it like Mr. Lionel sees it. I, I find that, you know, when we see, kind of, I think you'd call this like an infill case. We've seen, for example, a lot of infill cases on Crown Hill where, you know, the minimum, I think it's seventy-five, but every, every, you know, house on the street or every property is sixty, 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 sixty. And, but there's this one gap, you know, and somebody will come to us, and it happens all the time, you know, and there'll be a lot of opposition, you know, it's a change to the neighborhood. And I couldn't agree more. I think Mr. Boucher says it right. It's like, well, what they're proposing is no different than what's to the left or to the right of it, but it's a change of the neighborhood. And those I've consistently supported. But the fact, I find that, you know, on, in this neighborhood, by and large, they're seventy-five feet or greater. And so, I, I do find that the fifty-foot is, I, I think it'll impact the property values, and I'm not making a strong argument, I'm not trying to twist anybody's arm, but I think that this parcel has served perfectly fine as it has since its creation. And, and I, I struggle with the argument, like we're taking away a landowner's right. I mean, sold on the free market, it was an undeveloped lot of record, fifty feet wide. And I guess one other thing is, it, when I was looking at the application, and I thought, oh, that's like a positive thing to have the proposed five-yard setback on the side of number fifty-seven, you know, it, to me, it's like, well, it's testimony that it's not a big deal, like to the owner of fifty-seven, but, you know, the property's being sold and it's, and I'm, geez, you know, if, if, I feel like Mr. Boucher on that is, if I was going to be an affirmative of this case, there's two things, the single story, still not, I think that's quite important. I don't think there was, there was a picture that shows single story. But if, if this were, say, voted favorably, I would encourage a single-story stipulation. And, and I wonder if that five-yard setback isn't so much because the house would be almost very small, you know, prohibitively small, if you have a fifty-foot wide lot and ten on either side, and that's why we have the wider lot lines here. But at any rate, where I'm sitting, I, I'm not finding support for it. I, I'm not making a strong argument for that. I, I think we're having three in support, and I would encourage discussion on perhaps single story and, and maybe on that side yard setback, but that's where I'm at, and I didn't know if somebody else, Ms. Vitale, wanted to pick up the conversation.
And that's, that's why I said about the single story, because as per testimony, he showed a single-story house. And I would, I would definitely want that to be a single-story house if we would vote in favor of it. And I think we would say that there should be a fence there if number sixty-five, you know, indicates that that's what they would like to have done at that. There's other options, of course, available, and, you know, I don't always agree that fences are the best thing to do in this case, but, but if that's what the homeowner that's there currently wants, anybody that moves in afterwards is going to be purchasing, any three of these properties that are right here, they're going to see what they're getting. You know, they're, they're going to, they're going to purchase it with the, with the understanding of what's already there. So, what we're dealing with is the, the current people that are there. And I, I know that it was indicated that, you know, maybe it might affect property of ours, but I didn't really hear that in anything that was presented to us tonight. And, and, you know, you go through almost any neighborhood, and you might have that one or two lots that are different than the rest of the neighborhood, and that's not a bad thing to have happen. It gives a neighborhood character to have some slight differences throughout a neighborhood. So, I don't think overall I'm that concerned about that, but a single story is definitely a big difference than a, than a two-story. And I think number sixty-five, if we say that there should be a fence there, sixty-five wants it, then that I would, I would require that too, in what I would say is stipulations.
Yeah. Just another thought, I mean, Mr. Boucher on the, or Mr. Welch on the five side yard setback, just wanted to clarify, are, are you folks okay with that, with leaving that, or were you wanted to kind of discuss that a little further?
Well, here's my thoughts, right? If I, if I may. Again, I don't usually scrutinize this type of thing, but, so there's two hundred square feet there approximately, a little bit more that, that we would be, I would propose to eliminate. But if I look at this drawing correctly, the building envelope hasn't been fully utilized, right, to the, to the front? Okay? I'm not suggesting that it should go all the way, but what I guess what I'm suggesting is, is that there may be some way to, again, this is a non-conforming lot. I would expect that this is not going to be a traditional, you know, very general dimensional house built, right? You know, and I know that houses are designed and lumber is, is sold in certain dimensional lengths, and that makes sense, but whatever. So, I, I'm suggesting that there is possible to make up some of that, that, that room there, some of that square footage. And certainly, I know that a home could be designed with, not, not bedroom, but could be, or could be, but could be designed with some finished area in the lower level, right? So, so I know that the living space could be, so, you know, to, to get the home on this lot for the applicant, to get this home on this lot, I think that, that it may not be a very traditional, easy throw-up of a house, but could be done very easily by putting a little bit, you know, putting more, having to do a little bit more, I guess, legwork, but could be achieved. So, I guess I'd probably even feel stronger now that I would want to, I would make a motion that would, would be in favor of this application, but without that five, five-foot incursion on the right side. Does that make sense?
What are you proposing of, of not, not allowing? So, there would be a ten-foot setback on both, on both sides?
Both sides, yeah. Because the reason is, is what I'm saying is that I think that, and again, I still believe that, as Mrs. Vitale said, I would be strongly advocate for a single-story house, and, and if I ask Mr. Falk, we can do that?
Yeah, as long as it's a reasonable request.
Okay. And again, why I think it's a reasonable request would be for a single-story house, not, and I would not, you know, I wouldn't, not, not be voting for the five-foot right side setback. Why I think it's a reasonable request is because of the, what, because of the size lot that were, that the, that the applicant's asking for. So, I'm saying I'm supporting that, but it's reasonable that we're going to kind of say, hey, one-story home, we're not going to allow the five-foot side setback, knowing that I know that there's still some opportunity, maybe for the building envelope, to the house to be maybe a little different shape again. There's still some building envelope available.
Just to the front, yes.
Right.
I, I don't know, what is the, the front yard setback?
Twenty-five feet.
So, they show it right here, see? So, they show this block right here.
Okay, it's, it's.
There's still a little bit there, but.
Thirty, it says thirty-point-three currently, so they could move it in, again, five, that five feet.
Yeah, so there could be, there could be some, whether or not it makes sense. And I'm not proposing, I'm not a designer, I'm not telling what to do. I guess what I'm saying is, in general, because of the impact on this area, this neighborhood, I, I believe that limiting to a one-story house within this, the setbacks that this property allows, I would, and, and having, make sure the fence goes up on, on the left side, I would be in support of the application in that respect.
Well, I think it's fair, if you want to make a motion. Would you like to be, to be the scribe here? I'll be acting as clerk here, and so, so why don't you make a motion?
So, I just want to make sure before I start that, that the other, that the other potential supporters don't have any, wouldn't have any other suggestions, or are they?
Sure, and so, what we have is Mr. Boucher, just to clarify, is, you know, I'd spoken some concern, as, we've heard some other concern on the five-foot setback. you know, I'd spoken some concern, as, we've heard some other concern on the five-foot setback, and he is, so I guess I'm wondering, we're wondering, Mr. Welch and Ms. Vitale, what your thoughts are on that? On, on, we're at a, I think we're gonna hear, hear a motion of offense, sing, limiting it to a single-story and not permitting, making a motion to not permit the five-yard setback incursion, what your thoughts are on that, if, if a motion were to be forwarded?
I guess I have one question. So, basically, the variance would be for the fence?
Well, no, the var, the variance-
Single-story.
Yeah, the variance would be to approve the structure, which would be, so it would be approving the, the fifty-foot minimum lot frontage. It would be approving this five thousand square foot for the whole lot. And the minimum lot width, it would be approving the fifty feet. So he'd be, the proposal, I think, Mr. Boucher was saying was to, to approve those, but would not be approving the right-side yard setback of five feet, and he would also be having a stipulation that a fence would be added between this X lot, as we've been calling it, and sixty-five, and that it would be a single-family dwelling. Do I have that right?
Correct.
Okay, so if we go back to the land use code, the one ninety dash sixteen, they're really just kinda following in suit with what they could potentially do with that code, if they try to go after it. Except we're adding the stipulation of single-story and defense. So would they even need?
Well, they'd still need three variances.
Right, okay.
They'd just be taking off variance number four and adding two stipulations. Fence and a single-story house.
Would you like to make a motion?
I got one question for you, Mr. Chairman. On the, on the last variance, when they make the motion, do you, do you usually deny that in the motion, or just don't bring it in?
Well, I could, I'd say you could make a motion to approve the three and deny that, kind of all for this discussion that we've had.
All right. I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Hated Wind LLC, addresses L., East Glenwood Street. It's in the IRA zone, code section one ninety dash sixteen, table sixteen dash three. Requesting the following variances from the land use code, section one ninety dash sixteen, table sixteen dash three. Uh, one would be a minimum lot frontage, sixty feet required, fifty feet proposed. Two, minimum lot area, seventy-five feet, seventy-five hundred square feet required, five thousand square feet proposed. Three, a minimum lot width of seventy-five feet required, fifty feet proposed. We are, in this motion, we're also going to, um, deny the minimum right-side yard setback of ten feet required, five feet proposed. All requests to construct a new single-family house on a non-conforming lot of record. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than area variance. Again, to reiterate, when talking about the special conditions of the property, we felt, um, the, the approvers of this motion felt that the five-yard, five-foot incursion on the right-side setback is not, not warranted or not required in this particular case. Uh, we find that it is in the spirit and intent of the ordinance. It will not adversely affect the property values surrounding parcels. Uh, we've had no testimony or, um, documentation or any studies that would show us that in one way or another. It is not contrary to public interests, and substantial justice would be served. Uh, we are going to ask for, are gonna stipulate, um, two special conditions. One, um, with this variance would be that this will be a single-story home only, and that there will be a fence constructed on the left side of the property, a budding number sixty, number sixty-five, East Glenwood. The length of the property, on the length of that side of the property. And what that motion asks for, I'm sorry.
So we have a motion on the table. Is there a second to that motion? We have a motion seconded by Ms. Vitale. Is there any discussion on that motion? And again, the motion was to approve variances one, two, and three, and deny the right-side yard setback, along with adding stipulations of single-story and a fence to number sixty-five East Glenwood. Any-
Carter has something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When Mr. Boucher made the motion, I know he mentioned for the hardship that the, uh, the five-foot incursion was not warranted, or anything, but should you all go through the other points of law as well for the denial of number four, just to be more thorough? I mean, I, I would, just to-
Okay.
Cover all the points of law for the denial.
Okay. So, um, so can I amend?
Well, yeah, I'd just say, you, you have the microphone, you're, let's, uh, we're gonna have you, uh, add to your motion, specifically the denial of number four, the right-side yard setback.
Sure.
I, I think what, I think it's a good suggestion just to tick through the five criteria, if there's other criteria that, you know, just to speak to each one of those criteria.
I think Mr. Boucher said something for the hardship already. Uh, I know, and I know when you mentioned the hardship criteria, you, you went into saying that you didn't believe that the hardship was warranted for the five-foot setback on that side, so I think you covered the first one. I think it's now the spirit and intent, the property values, the public interest, and the, the justice.
All right. So I'm in my motion, and to continue on with the, 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 um, denial of variance number four, which is the right-side setback, ten feet required, five feet proposed. Just continue on. Uh, we find that it is not in the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find that it will not adversely affect the, uh, property values of, of surrounding parcels. We find that it is contrary to public interests, and we, we find that substantial justice would not be served by granting, um, variance number four.
So the motion is amended. Is there a second to the amended motion? It is seconded by Ms. Vitale. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing no discussion on the motion, a show of hands in favor of the motion. We have Vit, uh, Vit, okay, and opposed to the motion. So that's three to two. So for those in the audience, that motion carries. And, uh, I just wanna say again about the thirty-day window of appeal. I know, attorney, you're aware of that, and you could just feel free to apprise your clients clearly that there's still a thirty-day window of appeal that starts tomorrow. And with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number one. I'm just gonna catch up on my notes here, just a second.
I have them all, you can keep them. Don't worry about it. Actually, if I can have the one of the, the picture of the house, I have the others.
All right, I'll give you that, 'cause that's- All right, for folks, uh, okay. All right, again, if you were here at the beginning of the meeting, case number two has been postponed to the next meeting, January twenty-ninth. Is there anybody here for case number two? That's good. Are we good to keep going?
Yes, January twenty-third.
January twenty-third, is that what it was? Whoop, I'm sorry, case number two is January twenty-third, thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing on case number three. The applicant is Peter Auto Sales Incorporated. The owner is two thirty-eight Amherst Street LLC. Uh, I'll let you jump in right away, Ms. Vitale.
Um, I will reclose myself through this case, this is my employer.
All right. Uh, the description is, uh, the request for following variances. Number one, to allow graphics on a proposed electronic message center sign, where only three lines of text are permitted. Excuse me, and number two, to allow an off-premises sign panels on a proposed new ground sign for the benefit of Peter's Auto at two eighty to three hundred Amherst Street, and for Peter's Bump Clinic at Seven Diesel Road. Hi, good evening. If you'd like to give us your name and address for the record?
Good evening. My, my name is Peter March, New Hampshire Signs, sixty-six Goldledge Avenue, Auburn, New Hampshire.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to walk us through your application?
Yes, sir.
You can pull that microphone right off the, uh, right there, just pull that straight to you. It comes off the stand.
I'll try and leave it there for the time being.
Okay, then you'd have to stand close to it, 'cause otherwise, uh, we lose you completely once you get about a foot away from it.
Okay, I'll, I'll bear that in mind, thank you.
All right.
Uh, Mr. Proko, Mr. Peter Proko, uh, owns two thirty-eight Amherst Street, the side of the old Bahama Breeze, uh, beg your pardon, the Bahama Beach Club property. It has the Bahama Beach Club sign on it. He also owns two hundred and eighty to three hundred Amherst Street. And that's where Peter's Auto dealership is. We are asking to renovate the Bahama Beach Club sign, I keep calling it Bahama Breeze, but the Bahama Beach Club sign, and turn it into a sign that is useful for the Peter's Bump Clinic, which is located on Diesel Street, that has frontage on Amherst Street. So this is the old Bahama Beach Club sign. And we're asking to renovate it to this sign here, which has Peter's Auto on top, a message center, and a direction to the bump clinic. Which, as I said, although it has frontage on Amherst Street, it's actually located on Diesel Street. So the variance is, the variances we are requesting are firstly, um, from the land use code, section one ninety B, to allow graphics on the message center. And we're also asking to display the Peter's Auto logo, logos on the sign. There, and there. So there are two variances being requested in relation to that sign. Bahama Beach Club sign is and has been an eyesore for many years. Um, it's a hundred and fifty-five square feet. We wish to replace it with the new, a new sign, as I've mentioned, slightly smaller, and incorporate the message center. We intend, hopefully, to use the, well, we intend to use the poles, the existing poles, so the setback will not change. So the actual structure of the sign will remain the same. So as I said, we're requesting variances, uh, from one ninety B, and also one ninety-one zero three, to use the Peter's paddles on a sign that is essentially not on a, on the Peter's Auto property, but is on property owned by the Peter's Auto Group, Mr. Proko and his daughter Peggy. So if I deal with the five criteria, firstly, granting of the requested variance will not be contrary to the public interest. Public interest is served by allowing the traveling public to safety, safely identify the location of the business. This is a very busy and somewhat confused area, particularly with the new junction with Whole Foods and, and Aldi, and then the access to Route Three heading, heading south. So that whole area is, is fairly confused. And particularly when we, you take that Aldi and, and Whole Foods traffic into account, clear signage is essential in our, in our opinion. The revision of the sign does not change the nature of the neighborhood, nor does it threaten health and safety, public health and safety. In fact, it's a definite improvement over the visual aspects of these, as it's existing sign, which I say has been a, an eyesore for many, many years, and it improves safety. The ability to display electronic messages is key to the need that this business has, to display multiple messages on a single medium. Seems that the city does recognize this, or a number of, uh, message centers up and down Amherst Street, and indeed, on DW Highway and other areas in the city. They are tightly regulated by the city as part of the code. There's a series of criteria that the owner has to sign to make sure that the message center is not used in a, in a, in a, in an inappropriate fashion. So that relates to the way that messages change and that sort of thing, so that, that in this particular case is, will be signed and will be kept here. As I say, the code calls for a maximum of three lines of text. It seems like a situation with the code that's not really kept up with technology. Ten years ago, fifteen years ago, that's, these signs were basically limited to individual lines of code. Now, as you'll be aware, they do graphics and all sorts of other images, which are more pleasing, but also more beneficial to the traveling public. And they are more informative and promote safety to that extent. As I said, the character of the neighborhood is such that there are many signs of this type in this area, including message centers, and replacing this sign will not adversely affect the character of the area. Public rights will not be affected, we submit. Secondly, the proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance. The code concerning off-premise signs, so, so such signs need to be regulated to protect the character of the area where outdoor advertising signs are located, and to conserve property values in the area. Among others, goals are to promote the safety of the traveling public, to, to protect existing property values in both residential and non-residential areas. In this case, this, this sign will be slightly smaller, and it will be newer, and the size of the sign is reasonable compared to other signs in the area. It will help, help to identify a longstanding business that consists of a number of different aspects. And in fact, we would submit it does in fact improve traffic safety and protect, uh, protect property values. The goal of the ordinance is to protect public safety, and as such, ensuring clear directions for parties attending Peter's Bump Clinic, the Collision Center, has got to be a positive, uh, element of this request. Many people land up at adjacent, uh, businesses rather than the Peter's business. And an electronic message center is key to the business being able to promote the varied services offered, sales, service, repairs, on a sign while reducing the size and also creating something that is not an eyesore. Displaying the message graphically helps with clarity and readability of the sign. To the third point, substantial justice would be done to the property owner by granting the variance. Seems a worthy goal to remove the existing sign, the existing eyesore, and to replace it with a better functioning, more attractive sign. The Bahama Beach Club sign is probably one of the most visible signs in Nashua. It seems to be, uh, the entrance to one oh one, and it just seems to be a sign that, that, that negatively strikes the eye as one, as one turns onto one oh one. The business owner should be encouraged to upgrade this sign. Conversely, not allowing him to do this would not be equitable. The sign will conform more closely to the other Peter's signs, including the one with an electronic message center down, down the street on Amherst Street, and will help further the well-known Peter's corporate image. Allowing the property owner to use the message center to display graphics as well as text will be instrumental in assuring that the message he wishes to convey to the public is as effective as it can be using this technology. The proposed, number four, the proposed use will not diminish the values of the property. The sign being proposed is more functional, is new, and is more attractive than the Bahama Beach Club sign, which is clearly an eyesore and has been for some time. In addition, the setback remains the same, the height is the same, and the size is reduced. Multiple electronic, uh, message centers exist on Amherst Street, including the one on the Peter's property. And as I pointed out earlier, the city has requirements for the use of these signs. Peter's has been a responsible user of the site, the other sign on Amherst, and intends to be, continue to be a responsible user of this sign. We submit there's no effect on, uh, no effect on surrounding property values. Special conditions exist that the literal enforcement of the ordinance results in a unnecessary hardship. The bump clinic- The bump clinic has limited access, it has limited street frontage to Amherst Street, approximately 50 feet, and it's an 11 and a half acre parcel. The Peters Group owns and operates multiple adjacent properties in the area, attempting to propagate the corporate image across these properties. The overall image of Peters Auto is responsible and subtle, and this is a component of that. The code was probably not written to take account of a situation like this, namely where one owner owns multiple adjacent properties, home to several different types of associated businesses. In addition, we submit that the code has not anticipated the technological changes that allow users to display more than one, more than lines of copy, but graphics as well. In addition, Amherst Street has some unique traffic patterns that tend to confuse drivers not familiar with the area. This creates an additional safety burden that this sign hopes to address. This is a reasonable use of the property. I'll attempt to summarize that the proposed sign does not create visual clutter or overreach in any manner. It won't be contrary to the public interest, resulting in any change to the central character of the neighborhood, or harm or health, bar a positive change. It's reasonable, it's not overly aggressive, it won't be disruptive to the visual landscape, and may in fact enhance the streetscape. It's a well thought out design that will not negatively impact surrounding property values.
Right, thank you. Any questions, Mr. Lionell?
Do I understand correctly that the only business that's actually located on this Diesel Road that we're talking about is the bump clinic?
That is the purpose of the signs.
Okay, is to identify the bump clinic, so which is the smallest panel of the three panels on here, and the other two, it would seem to me are actually off-premises signs promoting the auto dealership, which is down the road and has its own multiple signs.
I would argue that the Peters of Nashua part is part of the corporate image of Peters, which is part of the, which is part of the bump clinic. It's also part of the vehicle sales. So it's a corporate conglomerate that falls in under the umbrella of Peters of Nashua.
Your rendition of the bump clinic sign has the Peters logo on it. If I was a driver, a customer looking for Peters of Nashua, and I saw the sign, I wanted to buy, you know, shop for a car, I might be tempted to turn in where the sign is, and although I would have driven by about five or six other signs, I would find that a little confusing.
As I said, the intention is to identify the bump clinic as part of the Peters family of companies, which consists of obviously sales, service, bump clinic itself, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, the intention is to have it as part of the same corporate image as the rest of, as the rest of the Peters Group.
That's all for me for now.
Mr. Welch?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. Boucher?
Not right now.
Yeah, I have a question. Was there, why, why now? Not, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but the Bahama Beach sign, it's been there as long as I've been in Nashua. What prompted, you know, this change to the Peters? Did they buy the property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I think you might have said that, but did I miss that?
Yes, sir. So the, Mr. Proko and his daughter Peggy own the company 238 Amherst LLC, which is the owner of this property, and they also own 280 to 300, which is the other part of the Peters Auto, Peters Auto Group. So there's a number of adjacent properties. They're separated by the mobile station, but the rest of that strip is essentially Peters, and it extends way back beyond the street.
So again, the Peters organization owns what I would call the Bahama Beach property?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is not an off-premise sign for 238 Amherst Street, which is owned by Mr. Proko and his daughter Peggy. So the people that own Peters Auto also own the property that the Bahama Beach Club sign is on, which is in fact 238.
Okay.
238 Amherst. I, I've been driven past that sign for 15 years, and I can't ever remember the Bahama Beach Club being open. I have no idea when it closed, but I think it was probably many years ago.
I'm old enough that I had gone there when it was open. That was before the shootings. I was asking that question because I was just, I, you know, Mr. Lionell, your question was as if it's an off-premises sign, and I say, well, not really, in a sense, and Mr. Falk has this kind of, well, was this highlighted?
I mean, I just did this on my own.
Yeah, let me just show this to this side of the table. It's just, maybe it's clear to you folks and not me, but that's the bump clinic, that's the old beach club property, but it's owned by Peters, which also owns all that.
I understand that.
Okay.
What's, what's happening with the Bahama Beach Club property?
I'd like to refer to Mr. Proko to answer that question.
What it comes down to is, I'm seeing this big sign for Peters of Nashua. If I'm looking for Peters of Nashua, which to me is a car dealership, I go down the street, and I've already passed it. So what is, what's going to be in here?
I understand your question. So the bump clinic is down there, that's part of the Peters Auto Group?
I understand the bump clinic is there, you've got to sign for the bump clinic. What else is there? Or is that all, the whole thing?
This is, I answered your question.
Well, just, Mr. Falk, who just wanted to jump in a second to your question.
I can answer your question if you like.
Yes, please.
Okay, the bump clinic sign is owned by Peters, that's where they do the repair of cars.
I know what it is.
The old Bahama Beach Club site, I believe they leased or rented that site for at least 10, 12 years, and they store car, Peters stores cars there for sale. They have some new car inventory and some used car inventory there, I believe, if I'm saying that correctly. I know they use that whole lot for parking of cars.
Okay, so, but it's not a retail location that a customer would go to?
No. If, I think if a customer needs a car and it's on that lot, their representatives can go to this lot.
Okay.
Retrieve the car and bring it to the showroom and detail it or whatever they need to do. But I know, I know they've used that lot, and they have, they've had permission through our planning staff to use that lot for auto storage outside. There's no structure there in it?
That's fine. I have no problem with that. No problem with that. I just, I just didn't understand why there was this big Peters of Auto, Peters of Nashua sign, and a second electronic message board for, to tell potential retail customers that the bump clinic is there. That's my issue.
Were you all set for the moment?
Yes.
Mr. Boucher or Mr. Welch, did you have any, you had a question?
Just want to hear a little bit more on, maybe you know, maybe you don't know, the applicant, what's, what kind of content, again, are they going to be looking to display on that electronic message board? What kind of stuff?
My guess is that they're going to be doing the same as the other center to a degree, but it's going to be mostly bump clinic orientated. It's a, the bump clinic is a separate business. It relies on, you know, maybe Honda people that have an accident heading down to the bump clinic to be, to be repaired, to have their cars repaired. So it will be a conglomerate of all of the stuff from Peters, but it will be bump clinic centric, if you like.
I think your client may be wanting to speak, which is fine. If you'd like to just give us your name and address for the record and the microphone so we can hear you.
Excuse me, thank you, board.
Welcome.
My name is Peter Proko, and I'm the owner of Peters Auto Sales. I'm a little, you know, I used to come in these halls, and they said, the impaired hearing, and I am, I can hardly hear what went on, but we own, we own the Bahama Beach Club property. Peters Auto Sales owns it, and we store cars there, and we're hoping to turn it into a retail dealership in the, when finances, you know, prepare. We've been good citizens of the, of the city. I think we've done a good job on maintaining what used to be a junkyard at 300 Amherst Street, and there's, you'll see nice green grass trees. We've complied with most everything the city has ever asked for. I'd also like to mention that we were big contributors to the widening of Amherst Street, and really didn't get too much in front of us. Everybody else did, the, with the new lights and everything. So we're trying to do the right thing, and we don't think this is an unreasonable request. It's an old beat up sign. I wish we could have as much business as the old Bahama Beach Club did. Everybody seemed to know where that was, where Brothers Fours was. So we're really asking for this, and we don't think it's unreasonable. Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Proko, Mr. Boucher has a question for you.
Did I hear you correctly that you were, that you are looking at potentially putting, trying to get a dealership in there?
Yes.
Okay, so.
We saw, we have lots of cars, customers go over there all the time to look at them. We really need that.
You're speaking to the mic there, if you don't mind.
We really use that as a sales lot, basically. It's a sales lot because we have to take customers, you know, over there to see the inventories.
So, so in that, now I understand a little better what your use of the property is, and I'll ask this to you. What kind of content, what would you be displaying on that electronic message board? What kind of thing could I expect to see from?
Just mostly, you know, to come down to the bump clinic, which is kind of hidden right down, you know, to come to the body shop, and to, you know, put on, what we put on the other reader board on the, on the property. In other words, just normal stuff to, you know, Peters Auto Sales, Nissan, Honda, you know, if we have specials. Also, I'd like to point out that it's not going to be one of these really bright, crazy electronic signs. It's going to be very much informed with the, with the city requests, and it's toned, you know, it'll be, it'll be a smart looking sign. And, you know, it's an 11 acre piece of property there that we're, you know, we want to improve from, it's been a vacant lot for quite a while, and just laying there dormant, not looking too well. So we're hoping to improve everything, you know, we've ever done on, on Amherst Street. I think we've done a pretty good job where we are, considering, you know, the, it was a, we inherited a big junkyard there from years ago, and we've certainly tried to, you know, live within the setbacks and tried to keep it up as best we could. I, I think we're very proud of our piece of property and working with the city. We certainly love the city and love Amherst Street, even though it is a little crowded.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, Mr. March, I had one other question for you, if I told you to come back. I guess I, the, the idea that our code hasn't caught up with graphics, you know, well, let me ask you, the, or maybe it's actually a question for Mr. Falk, or, but maybe you know, what are the requirements that you sign that kind of heal back those? Could you walk me through that briefly?
So the, so the affidavit that is signed, and I'll read the part of the code that is relevant. The applicant for a sign permit for a changing sign, in brackets, electronic, under the provisions of this chapter, shall provide with his application affidavit sworn or attested by the landowner and by the applicant, attesting to the facts that, A, the sign to be installed meets all of the criteria set forth in this chapter, B, that the, and I can elaborate on that in a minute, B, that the sign be operated in a manner consistent with the criteria set forth in this chapter, and C, that the landowner and applicant agree to be held liable separately or collectively if these provisions are not met. Okay, so, and there's a little verbiage on the back. Essentially, what it says is illumination elements on the face of the changing sign should remain at a fixed level of illumination for a period of not less than five seconds. So in other words, they're requesting a change no more frequent than five seconds. Changes from one message to another should be accomplished by the change of all the illumination elements on the face of the changing sign simultaneously, with the provision that the sign may fade to complete darkness and then re-illuminate with or fade to the new message. So what they're saying is basically, you have a picture of a damaged car, Peters Bump Clinic, that fades out, it goes to a picture of a can of paint that displays for no less than five seconds, more than five seconds, fades out maybe to another image with another message on it. So that's what that requirement means. Changing signs shall be equipped with the ability to adjust the brightness of the sign and shall not be operated at brightness which is substantially greater than other source of illumination in the area. These signs, modern signs are all equipped with automatic brightening devices. They have a photosol in the sign, and the operator sets the brightness at a level five, and as the sun goes in, the sign, I forget whether it brightens up or dims, but it light follows, so it follows light the whole time. So at night, it doesn't glare, it doesn't, it is not obtrusive. And so those are the criteria, and then the agreement that is signed is the part that I read initially.
Okay, thank you. Just to, on that, and this is like, you happen to have an American flag there. I've seen signs around time, around town that have an American flag flapping in the breeze. It's like, to me, that's not in the spirit and intent, but maybe I'm reading that wrong, and I guess I want to say to Mr. Falk, if that flag was flapping in the breeze, is that changing within five seconds?
Well.
Maybe I don't, I'm just trying to clarify for myself and nothing else what these words mean.
Well, really, the spirit and intent of the EMC code is that it's supposed to just have three lines of text and not graphics. Okay, that's what they're supposed to have, along with the size and the other things that Mr. March mentioned. Basically, what it is, is with graphics, it could be a car, it could be pretty much almost anything. These things are really almost like TV monitors. Whatever's on there, if it's supposed, if it's meeting the code specifically, it would be three lines of text. So three lines go up, they stay on for five seconds, they disappear. That's what it's supposed to be. With graphics, it's going to be a little bit different, because like you said, it could be a flag flowing in the wind, it could be a car driving down the road, it could be any type of graphic. It could be something moving, it could be pictures, there could be different things on it. So I'm thinking what they'd have is, whatever that message is, that would be on for five seconds, that graphic message would disappear, and a new graphic message would come up. It's a little bit different. With the text, it's easy. Text is, the text would stay up there for five seconds, that disappears, it comes back. Graphics, it's a little bit more involved because it's, it could be movement, it could be flag waving, fireworks blowing off on 4th of July, almost like a TV monitor could have.
Okay, thanks.
Hopefully I explained it.
I guess where I'm at is, I mean, your point is, you're feeling that the code hasn't kept up with technology. I'm not, I don't believe our code hasn't kept up with technology. I believe the three lines of text is there on purpose because there's been an outcry of graphics, particularly on Amherst Street, and I'm, I guess this isn't really a question, it's just where I'm at, and I just tell you while you're there, that, that's just, just me, though, it's just the way I'm seeing that, and I see the graphic situation as, let the alderman deal with that, because I've heard an outcry of, you know, difficulties from that.
I think the elephant in the room is probably the mortgage specialist, and it's obviously had a lot more, a lot more press recently since that he's been asked, he's been told to turn most of the signs off, and he's been sued. This sign would not, the current code would not allow this sign to operate anything like that. For example, that sign on Amherst Street just down the road is run at full brightness the whole time. It's run with scrolling graphics, and it's frankly even to sign people, it's deeply offensive, including the other ones that he has. So this is not going to be like that, and that really is the elephant in the room as far as the graphic content on these signs is concerned. is concerned. The, almost all of the other signs on Amherst Street or anywhere else in Nash were, are responsible and responsibly convey graphics. And I'm thinking of, you know, the Brewster's sign, the, you know, the McMulkin signs, even the sign of the dentist at Centennial, a bigger one, not Centennial, but the New Hampshire Liquor Store, those are all responsibly run. And I think that's a result of this part of the code. I don't think you'd be able to get away with what the mortgage specialist did. In fact, I know you wouldn't be able to get away with it now because it falls foul of this in about four or five different criteria. So, I think that the argument that I'd make was the lines of code, the lines of text were something that was sold with signs maybe 10 or 15 years ago. They're not really relevant today, particularly the prohibition on graphics.
All right, well, thank you for that.
Because these signs are capable of doing graphics and they add to the message.
All right. Any other questions? I think we're all set. You can have a seat. Was there anybody else to speak in favor of the proposed sign? Hi, sir, if you'd like to come up and give us your name and address.
Good evening, I'm Dan Hutchins from New Hampshire Signs, 66 Gold ledge Road in Auburn, New Hampshire. One of the issues with the graphics, or it looks like it's becoming an issue, is by code, most code do not allow flashing or animated signage. And that's probably part of the reason for the three line of text only. With this situation, what we would offer is that any images that go up there would be a static image, similar to what you pointed out earlier, Carter, where if it's an image of a car, it would show up on the screen, it's not going to be moving, not going to be flashing, and then it would disappear and maybe a message would come up after it. So, and I support the, support the sign.
Thanks. Any questions for Mr. Hutchins? No, no questions, so thank you for your testimony. Anybody else to speak in favor? Seeing none, is there anybody with questions or concerns? Questions, concerns, or opposition to the proposed sign at 238 Amherst Street? Seeing no opposition, I'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Who'd like to go first? Mr. Boucher?
Sure. I find support for this. I think that, I think we've, and we've heard of it and I think every business owner has seen what's happened, you know, on Amherst Street. And I think at this point, I think, I really truly believe that the applicant is going to be responsible. I think we just heard testimony from New Hampshire Signs that obviously there'll be, you know, this will be a static display. Certainly, I know that these displays are capable of doing much more, but I think that that is going to bring what the applicant wants, you know, a long way, what the applicant wants. So, I'd be in favor of the, of the electronic sign. Also, again, the off-premise sign, again, I think this is a situation where I understand why it's an off-premise sign. I think that, you know, as we know, this applicant owns a lot of land and obviously has some plans for this new property. So, I think that in the end and down the road, I think it'll make even more sense to have this off-premise sign. But even without that, I would also support the off-premise sign.
All right, thank you. Lionel?
There are two issues I have with it, but they don't rise to the level that would have me oppose the request. One is the large Peters of Nashua sign, which I think is going to be confusing at this point. Now, sometime down the road, Mr. Proko puts, you know, puts in another dealership there for who knows what, hey, maybe Tesla, I don't know. Probably, I know, bad, bad, bad. And then that sign could then indicate what was there. But as a Peters of Nashua sign, it seems out of place there because what's, the business that's there now is the bump clinic. The other thing that bothers me is the electronic sign at a place where traffic is very confusing. People are constantly crossing lanes and trying to, you know, get onto Route Three. I go this way all the time and if I'm coming out of the mobile station, it's crazy trying to look and make it through the traffic. I worry a little bit that an electronic sign there would distract drivers who, you know, people are going back and forth across the lanes, might cause some problems there. Other than that, I mean, replacing the Bahama Beach Club sign with a nicer-looking sign, that's fine. Having a sign for the bump clinic, that's fine, that's the business that's there. I suppose if we're looking down the road, that sign could then be repurposed for something more. Peters does have an awful lot of signs in that section of Amherst Street already. So, this is three more.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
Yeah. So, I was a little concerned about the electronic sign, but the testimony of it being a static image, I'm okay with. I don't, maybe more procedural question, I don't think, you know, who enforces that? I know it's not our governing, like, you know, our group, but like, who oversees that enforcement of?
Via Code Enforcement Department. If there's a complaint, they go out and investigate and see what portion of the code it may or may not meet. And then they would work with the property owner to resolve it.
Okay. And my other, I mean, which they also had testimony to speak to, was I was a little confused about Peters of Nashua not having an auto dealership there, but I do understand that it's the brand, the hierarchy, organization. And it doesn't, you know, it doesn't call out that it's Peters Honda or Peters Nissan or Peters Auto, it's just the failing name of Peters Nashua. So, now that I understand that, you know, I don't have an issue with that.
Thank you. My thoughts, and I say this to you mostly, Mr. Lionel, I mean, I see what the concern was. I was thinking at first, well, this is like really an off-premises sign, but in understanding that the organization owns that large piece of property, first they lease it, now they own it, I see it as they have the right for the sign there. I didn't see it so much as like the sign for the Honda dealer as, or Peters of Nashua, I should say, and the bump clinic. I didn't find that myself to be adding any confusion. I'm okay with that. I'm good with that. I mean, as I mentioned, I struggle, I'm not finding support for the electronic message center. And let me say, I do believe this applicant is completely credible and would hold to that. McMulkin said that and they didn't, GM Roth said that, they didn't, almost everyone who's come before us at times have drifted from that. And I'm not feeling that our code says that, three lines of text, because it's outdated. I think there's been an outcry and the alderman really didn't want to make any movement on that. And I'm, so I'm not in support of the electronic message center myself, everything else I'm good with. And that's where I come down on it. And I didn't know if maybe Mr., somebody would like to make a motion, see where it goes. I'll certainly be supportive of the sign, but not the electronic message center. And if you're going to make a motion, I'll be happy to take notes.
Okay.
We can have more discussion and that's fine, too.
Do I understand that you would be supportive of the electronic sign if it was limited to three lines of text?
Well, that, it would essentially be, it would meet the code, you know?
It wouldn't even need a variance.
Right. I mean, one thought that comes to mind, because I've been consistent, right, wrong, or indifferent, this is the way I feel, I mean, of course, other people have said, well, if you don't, you know, if I'm not favorable to electronic message, the same darn sign goes up, but it's just three lines of code that come and go unless something changes in our code lets it go to a TV screen. But I'm not saying, I don't want to strongly persuade anybody on my opinion of the electronic message center signs, I'm just saying I'm not finding support for that. And make that loud and clear, I'm supportive of everything else and I don't want to dominate the conversation. And I ask, any thoughts on the matter or a motion?
Okay, so I'm noticing here that electronic message centers are not allowed in the HB zone. That's the 19103. So, that's one of the variances they're requesting. The 19097 is to have the graphics on the electronic message.
Graphics, yeah. So, I think just to clarify on your question, what's permitted is three lines of text.
Yeah, well, in the table 101-7, it shows the design char, it's page 190, colon, 191, it's chart, table 101-7. The, if you look at design characteristics, letter J, you'll see that in the GB and HB zones that EMCs are allowed. They are allowed as long as they meet the criteria. So, they can have one, they just can't have one with three lines, without three lines of text.
Okay, so this is, this is not an outdoor advertising sign, this is an...
Well, that's the off-premises portion. Because, you know, two of the panels would be advertising businesses that are not on this specific lot. This specific lot, let's call it the Bahama Beach Club lot. The bump clinic sign and then probably the EMC would be advertising for other lots, not this particular lot, although they could probably use it for this lot as well. I don't know what the message are going to be. They could probably have several hundred different messages a day and certainly they'll use quite a bit of it for all of their properties. I think they spread the wealth, so to speak, with their signage.
Mr. Boucher?
So, just before we continue, right? So, I was really thinking about what you were saying and I do appreciate what you have to say about other situations. And it's funny because, you know, there's, I know there's one, there's one electronic sign that I think is kind of funny. It's a three-line, it's supposed to be three lines of text, but they find a way to animate that. And, and so, what I find here is, and again, I don't know if we could stipulate that and I don't know if it would change your mind, but this applicant, and I know this, we was talking about graphics, right? But, you know, he's not talking about motion graphics, right? It was specifically said that the graphics would be static, right? So, instead of, instead of a, you know, of text, it would be, it would be, it would be just a picture, right? That would just change, right? But I guess what I'm saying is that I see, I know one sign and I know, I think there's another sign on Amherst Street that is more of a line text and it's just, it's red, right? So, that's why I know it's kind of, I know the sign, but they find a way to, and, you know, it just kind of populates, right? And it's just kind of the way it does, it looks like it's, everything's running over and then it looks like it's moving, right? So, it's just interesting how, you know, that's. And I find that probably, not that it's offensive, I would find that, like, I have a problem with that more than I would have, than I have any issue with a sign that's done, it's just a picture that comes on. Again, the right brightness, it's not, not in your face, it's, you know, and it's not this big, huge, oversized thing, right? It's within its, you know, it meets its criteria for square footage and all that, so it's not that issue there. So, I just want to point out, and I think you probably know where that is, you know, where that happens.
Well, it's interesting. I certainly appreciate Mr. Hutchins' testimony and I had written a note here, static images. And that's, that, I think, that to me goes a long way from preventing, you know, the wild graphics that I think aren't intended in our code and have gotten out of hand. It's almost, when I see static images, it's almost like, well, it's getting, it makes me feel much more comfortable. I have to agree with that, you know, that's a much, that is a very, I think, beneficial stipulation to controlling the signs that have gotten out of control. I do wonder, not that I think this applicant would ever do it, you know, is the applicant going to own it forever? Is there going to be some other owner at some point in the future? And how much could that person push? That's also what I'm seeing with my difficulty with this, is absolutely no issue with this applicant. I have every confidence that will be followed, but we're not, we're approving it, or I'm, we're approving it for the land and that's where I struggle with it. But that's just me, I'm not trying to, I don't want to persuade others.
And I agree with you. And I think, you know, and again, as you're talking, you know, it's all coming to me, you know, more that, that, you know, I haven't been here a long time, but long enough to know that when I first came on the board, this was like, you know, this is really, really a big issue, right? And, but I think we've come, the city has come a long way, right? And maybe the Amherst Street situation really helped that, right? But I think people are more cognizant and more aware of that. And I think that, this is not our purview, but I think that enforcement has come a long way also. So, like you said, the good thing is, is we have, we have, we have a, we have an applicant here that sees it. Like you said, let's say the applicant sells the dealership and then somebody new that comes in. You're right, there could be something completely different. But I think now that, that the city is very sensitive to any of this and I think we have code in here that talks about static displays, right? So, I'm certainly confident that if we have, and I'm assuming we have the staff, we're fully staffed to go take care of these things, I think it would be addressed. And again, that's not our purview, right? But I guess I have confidence that today, more so than maybe five years ago, right, that we have more knowledge, we've experienced this more. So, I think we handle these things more. And I think it was much, much newer or less, there was less of this. So, it wasn't as prevalent and probably wasn't high on some people's radar, right? But now, you know, where this is kind of, I'm not justifying, I'm just saying that we know that this is kind of where things are going to go. And you're right, it would be so easy if the alderman would, would, you know, take care of an ordinance to look at this. But I think right now, again, the way I look at it is, I think I feel more confident than I would have five years ago, way more confident today. And again, especially with the applicants. But you're right. I would never sit here and say to you that the next owner of that dealership is going to handle it the same way. All I know is, is that if I was a resident of Nashua and I drove down the street and I didn't like that, I knew that I could call and make a report to Code Enforcement. Now, if Code Enforcement doesn't go out and do anything, you know, then is there an issue with staffing and all that? I don't know. But I would know from my knowledge, and I wouldn't be on the board at that time when I do that, I would just say, hey, I know that there is a department that should be addressing this. But that's just me, so that's just my opinion. I just let you know, just let you know that I do understand exactly what you're saying and I, and I see that. I guess maybe I'm more, I guess I'm more looking at, as today, I'm more trusting in the process than I probably would have been five years ago. And you've been on this board long enough that you probably, you know, from the inception, right, from the first time this, one of these ever came up, right?
I don't know, I don't think I've been on that long.
You said you've been around for a while. With the Bahama Beach Club, didn't you?
Wasn't on the board then, no.
So, all right.
All right.
I'm good.
Well, I don't know, was there any other discussion, Mr. Lionel?
I have nothing more to say.
You were going to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. So, we're going to make two separate motions on the two separate variances or...
Sure. I guess, Mr. Lionel, just where were you at on, if you don't mind, on the electronic message center? Were you in support?
Could we add a stipulation that the graphics would be static?
I think that would be a great stipulation. I think that would be a great stipulation to add. Why don't you make a motion for both together with that static stipulation?
Both together, okay.
And I think we might have a threesome over to do that.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for owner 238 Amherst Street LLC, applicant is Peters Auto Sales Incorporated, the address is 238 Amherst Street. It's in the HB zone, co-section 190-97, subsection B, and 190-108.
103.
103, maybe it was a typo, I'm reading off the wrong one, I'm sorry. 103, it's probably a typo, that's okay. So, they are requesting the following variance, from land use code section 180-97, subsection B, to allow graphics on the proposed electronic message center sign, where only three lines of text are permitted, and two from land use code section 190-103, to allow off-premises sign panels on proposed new ground sign for the benefit of Peters Auto at 280 to 300 Amherst Street, and for Peters Bump Clinic at 7 Diesel Road, zoning district is HB zone. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some of the method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an air variance. We discussed, number one, the properties that the applicant owns, owns the, what we call the old Bahama Beach Club property, owns the Peters Bump Clinic, and owns several other pieces of property nearby. It, we find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, it will not adversely affect property values surrounding parcels, is not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served. The special condition that we are placing on the first variance for the electronic message center is that it would be a static display for the minimum of what the code states, which would be five seconds. So it would have to be static five seconds, which means there would be no movement in the display.
All right, I'm just copying that down here. All right, so we have a motion on the table, is there a second to the motion? Mr. Welch, any discussion on the motion? I guess I'd just say that, while I'll be supporting this with the stipulation of the static display, and I hope, I hope that the sign accomplishes what we're driving for. I have to say, I'm a bit nervous, like you say, you look at something, and then the sign, it's almost like someone can figure out how to get around it, and then there's a problem. I just, I don't, I know that won't happen with this applicant, I hope it doesn't happen in the future, but, you know, I'm throwing my support in it with that stipulation. I would just wanted to throw that out. Was there any other discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor of the motion, so that's unanimous, so that passes, so good luck on your sign. And with that, I'll close the public hearing, I'm sorry, public meeting on case number three. I'd like to take a five-minute recess.
Sure.
Better to have bigger horsepower, just because of the way the whole setup of the vehicle is. So if you go online, look at YouTube, you can watch a GTR beat something with more horsepower.
Are we good?
Just a three seconds.
Yeah. We good to get going? All right, let's get back into session. I'd like to open the public hearing on case number four, the owner is UniFirst Corp., the application is Barlow Signs, the address is 8 Industrial Park Drive. We have three requests here to exceed the maximum number of ground signs, one is permitted. One additional sign was granted by this board in December of 2000, and that was for one additional ground sign, and so what's being requested tonight is a third one for a total of three. And that new grounds, proposed ground sign is proposed to encroach 20 feet into the 25-foot required setback to the intersection of Northeastern Boulevard and Industrial Park Drive, and encroaches seven feet, nine inches into the 10-foot required set, front yard setback in Northeastern Boulevard, and that's for a 32-square-foot proposed ground sign. Hi, good evening, you could raise that microphone up if you just want to lift it a little, and give us your name and address.
Good evening, my name is Craig Moore, I'm with Barlow Signs on behalf of UniFirst, located at 8 Industrial Park Drive.
Welcome. Would you like to walk us through your request?
Thank you. Well, I'd like to start off by clarifying that, that there's actually three signs located on this property currently, and one of the three is the one that we're actually looking at replacing.
True.
And I do have a photograph of that, that I'd like to, maybe I can bring up, I'm not sure if you guys already have.
Sure. I think we actually do have that in black and white. What we also have is this rendition, as I would call it, of the proposed new sign.
Yes.
Which, I think what you're proposing is where that one is.
I'll stick that up for reference as well, but, but what we're asking for today, again, the business is located on Industrial Drive, which is off of Northeastern, which is also north.
Northeastern Boulevard.
Thank you. Northeastern Boulevard. I was getting the park confused because of 8 Industrial Park Drive, so Northeastern Boulevard, which is where the main traffic is coming from. And for anyone that's not familiar with UniFirst, they are a cleaning service that specializes in uniforms for businesses, so they have a lot of trucks that come in and out daily that are servicing these off-site businesses, doing, bringing back laundry and going back out to the premises. One thing that they've, that they're challenged with is capturing either the attention of drivers, or visitors, or staff that are trying to pull into Industrial Park Drive, so that's why they approached us to help them come up with a solution, to place a larger sign where they have currently a smaller sign, which is pictured. They, again, they were just stressing the fact that they were trying to get the attention of traffic on Northeastern Boulevard, their sign, the sign that we drew, rendered, and proposed is, fits within the standards, other than the fact that there's, only one is allowed. And I'm going to quickly grab that picture of the sign. The sign is a four-by-eight, non-illuminated, double-sided sign. In the region four, I'll go through the other facts. From the image of the current sign, the location of it, there's a lot of vegetation on the right-hand side, that's what I'm trying to do, there's a lot of vegetation, and it's also, it's also located on the side. So if you imagine the sign, would still stand where the current sign is today, just go back the eight feet, instead of the current sign, just about two feet. The current sign is, obviously, at that size, very difficult to read on, for vehicles traveling back and forth at a high rate of speed. If you wouldn't mind, I'll go right through the supporting facts here, and then we can discuss.
Sure, I appreciate that.
So, as stated, the variance requests us for installation of one four-by-eight, non-illuminated, double-sided sign that stands six foot two overall height. We're also seeking variance required for the sign to meet the setback for both distance to the intersection and the front property line, variance to allow a second monument sign. And I believe it's stated that way as a second monument sign, because one is allowed by right, so there's two that's, that would be variances. Front is 10 feet requi-- front setback's 10 feet required, and we're proposing that two foot three, which matches the current sign, and also, to the intersection is 25 feet required, and it's five feet proposed. Variance required to allow three monument signs where two are permitted by previous variance, dated 12/12/2000. Granting of the requested variance will not be contrary to the public interest, because the orientation of the UniFirst building, where their parking lot is closest to the roadway versus their actual building, leads to confusion for motorists coming to the property. Currently, they are unable to easily determine to take a left or a right into Industrial Park Drive. This is not a residential zone, providing direction to the wayfinding public is in the public's interest. The proposed use will observe the spirit of the ordinance, because the proposed location of the sign, due to the sidewalk and the existing vegetation, requires UniFirst to see relief from the zoning ordinance for setback allowing an additional monument sign to aid in the identification of the entrance to UniFirst, which does not injure the public's rights. Number three, substantial justice will be done to the property owner by granting the variance. There's no harm to the general public, our sign meets the ordinance for size and height, we're only seeking a variance for placement, and to allow an existing monument sign located directly in front of the UniFirst building to remain along with an existing Uniclean sign. Number four, the proposed use will not diminish the values of the surrounding properties, because UniFirst is located in an industrial commercial area, the addition of a properly-designed sign will not direct, that will direct traffic to the UniFirst site smoothly is benefit to all surrounding properties. Number five, special condition is, exists for such, exists such that literal enforcement of the ordinance results in unnecessary hardship, because it is fair and reasonable for UniFirst to want to install signage that helps the public easily locate the property. Our proposal is a minimal request for a variance, for a sign that meets the ordinance's requirements for both the size and height. The distance the UniFirst building has set back from the Industrial Park Drive creates a unique situation where a monument located at the intersections of Northeastern Boulevard and Industrial Park Drive makes sense.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moore, is it?
That's correct.
Moore. Any questions for Mr. Moore, Mr. Lionel?
What is, who owns the property at 20? At least it's labeled 20 on this, I don't know whether it's 20 Northeastern Boulevard or Industrial Park Drive, but that's a smaller property right at the end of Industrial Park Drive.
Are you speaking of where the, where the retention basin is located?
I, on the map I'm looking, seeing here, it's a square box with a 20 in it, which I assume is a building.
Let me help out with your question, if you drive down Industrial Drive, and you pass by your building, there's another building like at the cul-de-sac, and I think that's what you're asking.
Yes.
It's five N associates that owns it.
Well, okay, so, and one gets to it by going down Industrial Park Drive, right?
Yes.
So, if they wanted a sign to get to it, they would want to put it probably in the same place that UniFirst is looking to put their sign.
It would be on our premise, though.
Premise, because their lot is...
Oh, that's right, UniFirst owns this entire lot, though, okay.
They own all the way from Northeastern Boulevard, all the way to the, basically to the turnpike.
Yeah.
Where 20, they own most of that, but they don't own the two frontage lots in a way.
Right, okay, that's really all I had. Mr. Welch?
Yeah. Was there any reason why you went with eight feet and not four feet or six feet?
Well, we're looking at due to size of text and the travel that's done on that highway and the rate of speed, they felt adequate at four by eight, that's why it was important for us to show an image of the state downside versus what you see. Even standing back where this picture was taken at about 10, 12 feet, it's, you can't read the current sign that's there.
Yeah, I see.
It felt like it was inadequate.
I forgot that's...
Four by eights, a standard, a standard sign, only 32 square feet.
A question I have is, it was, it's hard for me, well, to determine from sightwalking it, whether the proposed sign would be a hindrance. When you're coming out of Industrial Park Drive, Northeastern Boulevard curves, you can kind of see it in your above sign, it curves to the right, plus that vegetation has grown up over the years, I mean, when UniFirst moved in, there were no bushes there, and it's challenging, maybe not in a UniFirst truck where you're up high, and maybe you can see right over that, but in a regular automobile, you have to come out well in front of that sidewalk to see around of the traffic coming, I guess I would call it southbound on Northeastern Boulevard. But what I was not able to assess, it's actually quite hard now because there's some high snowbanks, is whether that sign, like in your bottom view, would be cutting out the view of the cars coming down. I have no data point on it, but I'm fearful that the sign, the proposed big sign, the 832, would make that worse, and I'm looking for you for a comment on that, or confidence that it's not going to create a visual problem for traffic.
Right, and that's a, that's a very valid point. I know when I was at the site myself, and speaking to the owner, we were looking at the, we were looking at the options here, and actually staking out the sign. And I think one thing that you would see if you were coming up in your car, is that you would actually, you'd come, you'd come up further to actually make a complete stop, and actually try to make a decision if you're going to pull out on the highway further back where this sign possibly could block your view. And as you, as you can tell, this little coyote here, which is harder to tell than it's not, is actually a landscaped area versus the trees that are growing up and the shrubs. So it's almost fitting for a sign, but it's not something you would come up and say, okay, I feel comfortable enough that I can pull out, but that'd be, you'd be breaking the law by rolling through the stop sign at that point. The other, I think that, I think that really covers it, it's really because there's already a sign there, we're not doing much more than going further towards the woods, and I'm not approaching it. We're not approaching any further towards the roadway itself.
Well, I guess it was a thought I had, like, you know, I think most people would agree that vegetation's nice, but as that vegetation's grown out over the years, just the thought, like, would it be better if the vegetation in that corner was just knocked back? Because I think there's a pretty big fence there at some point. And, and the sign, I'm just saying, if that sign were back two or three feet, I think you'd still see the proposed new one just fine, but it might be better to see around, but I, I'm not a...
It looks to me from the diagram here that the leading edge of the sign is already fifteen feet from the roadway. Is that correct?
It says... It's actually eleven foot six. Well, I guess it depends. Northeast, it's actually thirteen foot eight from that direction. It's eleven foot six from Industrial Drive.
Okay, yeah.
And one thing to consider is from this view and this, and this angle, that'd be, that'd be feasible to be able to maybe set it back. But coming from the other direction, you're already dealing with obstruction of a telephone pole and setting it back further. Cause a lot more landscaping to have to take place across that roadway. But I, I do, I do understand your point and I, I think from personally being out there and pulling up to that intersection myself in my car, I don't think that this is going to cause a hindrance on vehicles.
I mean, I'm relying on, on your testimony on that because, like I say, it's, it's a watchout for me, but I, without a post, you know, sometimes, you know, someone might put stakes in of where a proposed sign might go. With that, then you, then I know, or I think anyone would know, I think it would be obvious. And I'm just saying, I'm gonna, I'm relying on your testimony that that's not going to be a site problem.
I don't think it's, the road kind of goes off at an angle like that, so...
Yeah.
So as you come up, you're gonna, you're gonna have a good line of vision looking north on Northeastern Boulevard anyway because the road is kind of, Northeast, Industrial Park Drive is not at a ninety-degree angle. Really, it's offset, it's offset maybe five or six, ten degrees. So, as you pull up to Industrial Park Drive, if you look up to the, to the north, I think you have a pretty fairly clear view looking up the street, either down the street.
I agree, like on, it's interesting, like on the view Mr. Falk has here, that's right, this is at an angle, which makes it easier to see, but I'm saying when you look at this scale here, the road's curving and for the frequent users of this, which is me, you know, when you're trying to get across Northeastern Boulevard, the southbound traffic, there's not a lot of view, you know, because of that curve, it comes into view. You know, if somebody's going forty miles an hour, you start pulling out and then someone comes into view, that, that's challenging right there. So, any knockback of, of the view down Northeastern Boulevard, to me, makes it more of a challenge. But I say, I'm going, your testimony is, that's not going to truncate that or make it any worse. I, I...
I mean, and we're really calling out these dimensions as accurately as we can. I mean, thirteen foot eight is a fairly good setback from a, from a main road like that. Most cars you're talking about are sixteen feet long, so...
I guess what, the other question I had is, I mean, years ago, when UniFirst was going in, the presentation was, kind of like you said, it's, it's not a Bellettes, it's not a Boston Billiards where you have new folks going every night. It's a company that the drivers go in and out of, and that's my witness. I mean, in the morning, there's kind of a steady stream of trucks coming out, and I know those folks are, you know, know how to get back. So it did puzzle me when I saw this. I mean, I agree, the sign that's there, I think is pretty darn small. I'm sure the regular drivers have no issue with it, but it's not only regular drivers. But I guess I was a little surprised at, you know, the four by eight need when the bulk of your business is the same people going in and out every day.
Yeah, like I, like I stated, that there is, there's a variety of people coming in and out, whether it's, whether it's staff that work at this particular office or it's drivers doing deliveries or pickups, or visitors coming to the site, maybe for meetings, for corporate meetings, to discuss doing, future business with them. So, it is, it is a bit of an identity for the building itself and for the business. But, and they offer, they offer the Uniclean service, UniFirst, they have, they have the two different branches there. But, again, it's, it was enough of a need and enough of an issue that the owners actually approached us to, to come up with a solution that they could get a sign out here because they were having issues with people either flying by or slamming on their brakes at the last minute. And it was, it's a concern for them. They don't need somebody running into the back of their trucks either.
And is, is it actually two different businesses, UniFirst and Uniclean?
Yeah, it's, they're like, this is, UniFirst is the actual umbrella business, the main, the main core. This is the cleaning branch of it, Uniclean. They, that's why when you go further down the property and there's the cul-de-sac, there's two entrances. And that's where the other two signs lie. The first entrance is UniFirst, the second one's Uniclean.
Okay, thanks, that's all I have. Anybody, Mr. Boucher?
Just, just a clarification on the drawing you have here, this one here. It says that, that your ground, that monument sign that you're proposing says leading edge of proposed sign to be within, within five feet of intersection? See what that, see, so what, 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 really are you saying there? Because that's not, because that was my concern when I saw this, right? But then when I saw the pictures, it didn't, yeah, and I...
I don't think that text box is legitimate.
Yeah, so I was, I was just wondering if that's just a suspect, if that's just an error?
Maybe thirteen, five feet within the property line is only getting allowed, but...
I think the three smaller text boxes are probably more accurate.
Yeah, I mean, it's, they clearly are, and these, these stakes are identifying, the current sign is identifying where it is. Definitely more than five feet, and I know you're just trying to clarify because we have to put this into writing, but it's, yeah, we can, we can note discretion.
I just, I just, like I said, like Mr. Fox said, I was just hoping that was just a bogus, or it's just a mistake, that's all. Because it would negate everything else that we're looking at.
I think they've revised their plans maybe a couple times, and maybe now it's just a leftover piece or something. I think that's what it was, probably.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think we're all set then. I don't think you're here to speak in favor or against this. So you can have a seat and we'll close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Thoughts? Thank you, Mr. Boucher.
I saw this and, and same thoughts, that they've been operating for a long time, you know, with that. But I, but I truly believe that it is, part of it, I know, is identifying the building better. You know, it's, I'm just maybe surprised that it hadn't been done before in some other form, but, which is, which is fine. From experience, I know that they, it's a very becoming, it's a very competitive field, so I know that they're trying to attract new business. So I can, I don't see the volume like at the Bellettes, whatever, but, but I'm sure that there are people that are going to go there that are not familiar with, you know, the area and probably is, you know, not a bad idea. So, the, the distance from the street, you know, I was there looking at the existing sign and I just kind of, I pulled out and I just did the same thing you were thinking about, but I looked at the edge of that sign and I was in my truck, but I figured, you know, if I was lower, could I see anything different? You know, snow is always a hindrance, but I was looking at that sightline and I saw a truck coming down the road, so I could see the, you know, higher. I says, yeah, so I could see that, just like Mr. Fox said, the road, I think curves in a right, the right arch or the right direction. So, I, I felt good about that and I feel a little bit better now about it. So, so I guess, like I said, I would be in support of the application.
All right, thank you. Mr. Lionel?
The, the only issue I had was sightline from somebody coming out of Industrial Park Drive. And I, I drove, I drove, excuse me, drove by there today and looked at it. And I don't think that's going to be an issue.
All right, thank you. Mr. Welch?
I, I support the application. I don't have any issue with it. I use the intersection daily, so...
All right, Ms. Vitale?
Yeah, I don't either. The sign's no closer to the road than what it is now, pulling out. It didn't seem to be an issue either way, so I, I'm fine with the application.
Yeah, I think you've spoken my thoughts as well. Mr. Lionel, would you like to make a motion?
Sure. Like to make a motion on behalf of property owner UniFirst. The applicant is Barlow Signs. The address of the request is eight Industrial Park Drive in the P.I. district. Variance requested is to install a four-foot by eight-foot, non-illuminated monument sign that's six feet two tall. The variance is required to meet the setback for distance to the intersection and front property line. Ten foot required, two foot three to the property line is proposed. To the intersection, twenty-five foot is required, five foot proposed. That comes from, that again is what was on that sheet. Do we think that's incorrect?
Well, I, I think the discussion, like on the, number two, it says to encroach twenty feet into the twenty-five foot required setback. I, I'm taking faith that Mr. Falk has articulated that correctly. I think, I'm not, we're not sure if that jives up with that boxed thing that says leading edge of proposed sign to be within, because within means closer than. In fact, I, so, I, I think the description is correctly stated. I think we're not comfortable with that one box that Mr. Boucher pointed out because it says within five feet.
Maybe it should just be five feet, because it's to encroach twenty feet into the twenty-five foot.
So if, I think if you were to read this, it's probably more accurate than what's on the application.
Okay.
If you read that, I think it would be, I think it would be better.
So we're going to redo the, the description of the variance request. Going from the, what's on this sheet here. Requesting the following variances from land use code section one ninety-one oh one, table one oh one dash seven. One, to exceed the maximum number of ground signs, one permitted, one additional ground sign existing from variance grounded by the ZBA on December twelfth, two thousand, and one additional ground sign for a total of three. Two, to encroach twenty feet into the twenty-five foot required setback to the intersection of Northeastern Boulevard and Industrial Park Drive. And three, to encroach seven feet nine inches into the ten foot required front yard setback on Northeastern Boulevard. I'll request to construct a new thirty-two square foot ground sign. This is in the P.I. zone. The variance is needed to enable the use of the property. The prop, the building is set back way afar from the intersection and drivers approaching it would not be able to know where the building is. So the sign's location and size makes it possible for visitors to properly locate the property. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. This is an industrial zone. It will not adversely affect the property values and surrounding parcels. It's fairly consistent with other signage along Northeastern Boulevard. It's not contrary to the public interest and substantial justice to the applicant would be served.
Motion on the table to approve. Is there a second to the motion? Ms. Vitale, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, a show of hands in favor, so that's unanimous. So, congratulations, your sign is approved. Remember, there's a thirty-day window of appeal. Make sure your client knows that and have a good evening. With that, I'll close the public meeting on case number four. I'd like to open the public hearing on case number five. All right, have a good night. The owner is Parma Revocable Trust. The applicant is Robert LaPlante. The address is nine Victor Avenue, and the request is a special exception from land use code one ninety dash fifteen, table fifteen dash one, and that's to allow an accessory in-law dwelling unit. Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Robert LaPlante, twenty-one Hampshire Drive. We were issued a permit for a, an addition on eleven twenty-seven, two thousand seventeen. So the party will be, it'll be her sister moving into the home. At this point, the addition is being built. The foundation was signed off. The framing will be signed off in a couple of weeks. So, this would just give the, her sister more access to the property by having a kitchen instead of sharing a kitchen for the in-law apartment. So with this being said, it's not going to affect any sore or water conditions. This property is already being built. It's already been approved except for the in-law apartment portion. It's not going to create any extra traffic in the area because they're already residing there, so it's not bringing any extra people to the property. It's, it's really a low impact for this family. They're three elderly people. They would have liked to have been here tonight, but they chose not to. I'm not sure why, maybe too many steps to get here or... Here we are.
All right.
So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Yeah, let me just jump in with a few questions. There's some criteria here. I'll tick through them real quick and, and let's see if you can answer them for us. Do you know if, if you're, is this your client? Are you the builder?
My client.
Your client, okay. Have you seen this list of criteria?
I did, and I, and I had it on my laptop and I was going to use it. Unfortunately, I left the lid open a little bit with the papers in between it, and I've been sitting here for three and a half hours.
The battery's gone dead. But let me just tick through those real quick. The accessory dwelling unit shall be clearly incidental and subordinate in extent use and purpose to the primary structure and does not exceed seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Correct, it's seven hundred and forty-four feet.
All right, very nice. The accessory dwelling unit shall be the only accessory dwelling unit within or on the same lot as a single-family dwelling.
Correct.
Number three, the accessory dwelling unit shall not alter the single-family character or appearance of single-family dwelling or its conformity with the character of the neighborhood.
Correct.
The owner of the property must occupy either the primary or accessory dwelling unit as the owner's principal place of residence for a period of at least five years.
Correct.
Number five, well, this is, there's a covenant here which they have to sign and provide. You've probably seen that before.
Correct. They're aware of that and they have no problems with those conditions.
Great. And then, one additional off-street parking space is required above the minimum standard for a single-family home. Is that...
We weren't asking for that at this particular point, but if, the building, planning department said if we were going to ask for the additional parking spot, there was going to be an extra four hundred dollars. And the applicant is on a, she's on a retired, so the four hundred dollars was, was not in her budget.
Okay.
I mean, there, there are enough, or there is enough room on there for three parking spaces, which is all they need.
There's enough room.
So they don't need another one. They were gonna, they were contemplating another driveway and that would have been a variance, but I don't think they wanted to do the extra curb cut, which is in the new ordinance.
Okay, so you're meeting that?
Yeah, they do meet that.
Meet that. And then an interior door shall be provided between the primary dwelling unit and the accessory dwelling unit.
Correct, that's, that's part of the in-law conditions.
Yep. And the single-family dwelling and accessory dwelling unit shall not be separated in ownership.
Right, no, definitely not.
Right. And then the last one is accessory dwelling units shall only be associated with single-family detached dwellings and the answer to that is yes, we know. Great, so that criteria is met, thank you. I didn't have any other questions on the matter. Any questions? I think we're all set. You could have a seat then. Close the public hearing, open the public meeting. Thoughts, Ms. Vitale?
I'm comfortable with the approval as it was presented.
Thank you. Mr. Welch?
I have no issues.
Mr. Lionel?
No issues.
No issues, pretty straightforward.
Same here, very straightforward. I, maybe I'll make a motion if you don't mind. I'd like to make a motion, let me get my paperwork back in front of me, because it has gone somewhere. Maybe I won't be making a motion. Oh my gosh. Nope, it's right here, sorry. It is back. It is back. I'll make a motion on behalf of Parma Revocable Trust, the applicant is Robert LaPlante, and the address is 9 Victor Avenue, the request is a special exception for an accessory dwelling in-law unit, this is in the RA zone, this is listed in the table of uses, code section 190-15-dash, table 15-dash-1. By testimony, the board finds it will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety, we find that this proposed in-law accessory dwelling unit will not overload public water drainage or sewer or other municipal system. By testimony, the nine special regulations are fulfilled, and the board finds that this addition and proposed in-law will not impair the integrity or be out of character with the neighborhood, and so I think the board finds that all the criteria is met, and I make a motion to approve as presented. Second to the motion, Mr. Lionel, any discussion on the motion? Show of hands in favor, so that's approved, so your application is approved, sorry it's been a late night for you, but at least you got an approval out of it, and with that, I'll close the public meeting on case number five. Moving right along, we also had some minutes from December 12th, I took a look through those, I didn't see any corrections needed. Did anybody have any corrections on that? Mr. Lionel, Vitale, Boucher, and I were here.
None.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from December 12th, 2017, as presented, seconded by Mr. Lionel, show of hands in favor, so that's approved unanimously. We have one case...
It'll be more than that one case.
Oh, all right.
It'll be the, the 323 Daniel Lipsor Highway will be on. Also, there's two other cases that were tabled for this meeting. One was for 224 Henry David Drive, was tabled back in like September, I don't think that's going to go, but that is scheduled to go, and also the one for 34 Franklin Street, for Lofts, 34, the sign, that's also going to be on this meeting. So we, we should have either three or four.
Does anybody see any regional impact from the 591 West Hollis Street?
No.
I've seen five heads saying no, so we, just to put it on record, there's, the board finds unanimously that there's no regional impact for the proposed agenda for January 23rd. I'm not, I don't think there's any other business before us, we normally elect officers, Rob's not here, I had asked him if he was interested in running for office, I didn't hear back from him, hope he's interested in running. I, I think it would be prudent to maybe, you know, have that discussion and vote when the five full members are present. Hopefully that'll be our next meeting. I know myself, I'll be flying back from the West Coast Tuesday afternoon, planning to get into Manchester at 5:00 PM with a, with a stopover in Chicago, so I...
In January, huh?
I may not be here, or I may be late, I mean, if I'm not here at 6:30, plenty of people can take it away, I'll be trying to get here. I guess, was there, with no other discussion, I make a motion to adjourn, seconded, all in favor, and we're closed at 9:23.